Good evening, Winthrop. And welcome to the Winthrop Town Council meeting of June 16th, 2020. This is a remote meeting with each councillor joining in from their own homes. This will be shown live, though remote, on WCAT. It is being taped for further showings by WCAT throughout the weeks. There is a call-in number for Winthrop citizens to join in, and that number is 301-715-8592. That number is good for both public hearings and for public comment. Again, the number is 301-715-8592. Once you dial that number, you have to put this identification code in. It's long. I'll repeat that just before the public hearings. If you didn't get it, get a pencil and paper and be ready for the next time we're putting it in. Could we please have the Pledge of Allegiance? Larissa, would you put the flag up? And Tracy, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Yes. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic which stands one nation, for God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Should we have a roll call, please? Denise?
Councillor Jarrow?
Here.
Councillor Flockhart?
Here.
Councillor DiMarco?
Here.
Councillor Christopher?
Yeah.
Councillor Honan?
Here.
Councillor Farino?
Yeah.
Councillor Conti?
Present.
Vice President Latiri?
Yeah.
President Boncory?
Here.
Both quorum.
Thank you. I hope everyone received the minutes of June 2nd meeting circulated. Is there a motion to approve those minutes? So, motion. Motion's been made by Richard Farino, seconded by... Who seconded it?
Barbara.
Barbara Flockhart? All right, is there any discussion on the minutes? Any amendments?
I have one amendment.
Okay. Go ahead, Richard.
It was on one of the votes, I think it was just a miscalculation, where it stated that councillor Honan voted yes and no on an issue. And I think it was for us to have the Finance Committee meeting a day earlier than we're having it. I'd just like to have that amendment corrected.
Okay, I'll check that out, fix it up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so how are we amending that? How would you like it amended?
Just correct it.
To correct the vote of councillor Honan.
Okay. All right, is there any other discussion or any other questions? Is someone trying to talk?
I just said motion to accept the minutes as amended.
Okay, motion's been made to accept the minutes as amended by Barbara Flockhart and seconded by Richard Farino. All right? Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please listen for a recall vote. Roll call vote.
Councillor Jarrow?
Yes.
Councillor Flockhart?
Yes.
Councillor DiMarco?
Yes.
Councillor Christopher?
Yes.
Councillor Honan?
Yes.
Councillor Farino?
Yes.
Councillor Conti?
Yes.
Vice President Latiri?
Yes.
President Boncory?
Yeah.
Thank you.
In general information and recommendations, we have a discussion on the agenda on the water and sewer rates. Austin, are you leading that?
So, the water rates, as we've discussed previously, are going to have to fund a different level right now of a budget. We have been exploring how we can go about funding the budget correctly. We recently had Dick Hinkston, the town council auditor, speak to you all, not last meeting, it was the meeting before, concerning the water sewer rates. I know there was some alarm about the potential for them to go up again. Again, I stated back then that this is something that should become somewhat regular on an annual basement basis of a small increase to support the budget. This supports both the usage and the infrastructure and the improvement of the infrastructure of the water sewer system within town. So with that, further exploration, it seems like we don't need to go up a dollar at this point. We're comfortable, or I'm comfortable proposing going up 75 cents. I know it is still relatively close, but it's less than what we had originally stated. This is a real necessary matter. We need to continue to improve the infrastructure in town. Because of our infrastructure, that leads to issues that we've had with insurance claims because of different parts of the system. So, we really want to work hard to fund this enterprise fund correctly and make it so we're not having those enormous hops that happen. What happened in the previous fiscal, well, kind of previous fiscal year and a half, was there was a real lag in increasing the rates to meet the increase in costs over time of the debt and the usage. So, 75 cents is really what we're going to target on. I believe that that should get us through the entire fiscal year so that we can have this conversation again in another year. Things to keep in mind, though, for the future. One is that I brought it up this fiscal year prior to this elected group of the council, but with the previous council concerning a study of the water rate structure, tiers, what our block rates are at the lowest end and things like that. I think we need help with that. I think it would behoove us to bring in a consultant or some type of outside entity to help us set a more equitable rate across town, whether we split it up from single-family houses to multifamily units or condos versus single families. However you do that, there are different ways to structure this so we can look for more equity. Unfortunately, that top amount that the town owes in both debt and the running of the department and the water sewer bill that we're getting from MWRA will still, most likely, remain large. What we are trying to try, do, though, is splice it up a little bit so that we get a little bit closer to everyone paying their fair share. So, one way that could happen is people who frequently water their lawns and have significantly higher usage or fill their pools, make a ding at a higher base rate because of their increased usage in certain times of the year. So, we are more than willing to explore that. Again, though, that whole amount is still going to remain a large amount. How we cut it up differently is what I'm committed to doing in fiscal '21. I think that we have a real opportunity to kind of clean things up a little bit. And there's also going to be, there's going to have to be discussion about a stormwater fee. This comes down from the EPA at the federal level. We have a local fee that will come from the state as well, from the Department of Environmental Protection. This deals with the water that hits your property and doesn't make it sway into the ground soil and the water because of impermeable surfaces. This is just something that's happening because we have too much stormwater making it into the sewer line across the network. This is a nationwide problem. This is not just a Winthrop problem. This permit from the, it's called the MS4 permit, has been discussed and fought about in court for years, actually. But this is something that's going to be coming as well at some point. I don't anticipate that we will be charging for this in fiscal '21, but it is something that the community will have to explore as a potential additional fee to meet all of the requirements of higher environmental protection level agencies. So with that, Anna, do you have any additional information that you wanted to add to this conversation?
No, just that increase that the town manager is speaking about would be relevant for the August bills. And I know that, I think at the previous meeting, there were some questions about when the town would see any potential change in the usage as a result of folks being at home due to the COVID-19 crisis. So that would be relevant to those bills. The previous bills that were due in early June were only through the beginning of April, so that sort of missed that entire chunk in April and early May when folks were, and most of May when folks were still at home. So we'll see how that changed build usage on the next, on the next billing cycle.
While we're here, I got a correspondence specifically toward water and sewer bill and rates, and that correspondence was from former town council president Peter Gill. And he was requesting that the council not include any subsidies to any of the enterprise funds, especially the Water and Sewer Fund. And he claims that the Water and Sewer Fund should be revenue neutral, projected income from users' fees equal to the expenses. And he feels that the town manager should be adjusting the rate to make sure that we remain revenue neutral. So I just wanted to get his letter, and even though it's our correspondence, it's specific to what discussion is right now. And he is, wants Anna and Austin to figure out what the rate should be and to set the rate.
Councillor President?
Yes.
Just a question for Austin. You know, I know it's not something you enjoy doing to raise the rates, but you do what you think is best. I would just say on the, you know, to look further down the road, to, for example, to charge a person that has more usage a higher rate, I think is what you were saying, and just to say, I don't have a pool, I don't have an irrigation system, but sometime, you know, what we don't want to do is to have people not use the water. We don't want to have our usage go down, we want our usage to go up, I think. So, I would just try to say not to discourage anybody from using the water that they're using. And I would wonder, I know you're talking about a study, if it's something that maybe Steve could do, but just to look into, our loss water was up over 20%. Is it still in that ballpark? And is that something on non-metered water, I guess is a better verbiage for it? Do we have a good idea of what that number is and where it's coming from? I know the MWRA would like that number closer to probably 10 or 12%. I don't know, Austin or maybe Steve?
I believe Steve is on the call. Steve, can you unmute yourself quickly?
There he is.
Yes, how you doing? The unaccounted for, Jim, is, I mean, we'll have a better feel for it at the end of this calendar year to see, you know, we're still aggressive with the, with the, the infrastructure improvements. We're still, we're wrapping up our new, still at the ending, about a third left of those, the new meter replacements. Certainly, as part of that meter replacement project, we've been taking out the supply valves. So that should certainly reduce the, any unaccounted for that was associated with potential for theft. It takes that component out of it. There is still, as aggressive as we've been with the water main replacements, there is still a large percentage of the system that is 75-plus years old. So we know we do have some, some II issues. We've certainly making improvements on that. We have now meted all of our public spaces. There is no irrigation systems that don't have, no parks or cemeteries that have irrigation systems that aren't meted. So we'll, we'll recoup that. It's not billable usage, but at least it's accounted for usage.
Accounted for.
So it'll allow us to get a much better calculation on, on what the true unaccounted for water is. So each one of those things kind of, you know, gives us more accuracy for that unaccounted for. There was a time before we started this meter replacement project that we were up over 20% and we were estimating about 7% of that 21% to be theft. Again, it was just, it was an estimate because there was no other places that we could really account it for. So, I'm hoping that the, that we can get a lot better accuracy on calculating the unaccounted for as, you know, as we wrap up this meter project. And certainly, we've got to continue to be aggressive on water main replacements.
Thanks, Steve.
Okay. All right, it's at the end of that discussion on water and sewer rates. We'll move on to General Information and Recommendations, Part Two, which is a fiscal year 19, 19 budget, police and library union contract. Austin, is that yours as well? You're muted, you're muted, Austin.
So, we have come to agreement on the fiscal, unfortunately fiscal 19 MOUs for our library union and our police officers' union. We don't need motions on this because this authority lies with my office, but, and we can fund these through the current funding right now that we have within those departments. Again, this goes back to fiscal 19, not even fiscal '20, which we are about to end. But now, with these MOUs, we are clear of fiscal 19 of all of our union group contracts. What it gave each of these union groups was a base change of 1.5% and then little other items. But 1.5% was the model, that's what we had used across the board for all of the other union groups. And now, we are at the table and going to be at the table with some of our unions in the very near future to try to negotiate through some of the proposed impacts that we're going to have, kind of based off this budget and what we've seen with COVID-19. So, happy to have both of those finally signed off and agreed upon. One of them had gone to the union and for a ratification vote and was voted down. Another one, we are really stuck on the specific language about bereavement, but we've cleaned those up and we, the retro payments will go out soon. And then we will continue to work on fiscal '20, '21, and '22 with all of the other bargaining units.
Okay, thank you. Also, under General Information and Recommendations, I want to announce that we, in accordance with the governor's order, have opened up and approved outside seating for our restaurants in Winthrop as of Friday night. And the Board of License has approved any additional liquor and food distribution in those areas as if it was additional outside seating. Following restaurants are now open and have outdoor seating, and they're Blackstrap, Viking Pub, Hong Kong Dragon, La Siesta Restaurant, Alia's, Belle Isle, Piccolo Party, Rosetti's Restaurant, and the following clubs. Winthrop Yacht Club, Pleasant Park Yacht Club, Cottage Park Yacht Club, and the Lodge of Elks, I believe is doing pizza in their backyard as well. So, thank God, we've got some of these businesses, the ability to get back after three or four months of being closed and having no income at all. And hopefully, the weekend was good for them. I saw a couple of the places I went by, and they all seemed to have some business, and it was very nice to see them doing that. But I want to remind the people of Winthrop that COVID is still a threat, and we are still social distancing, and I request that people wear masks. I've been down the beach, 40 and 50 people are not with masks. I saw the restaurants that were operating in the past two days, and the, the people that were serving were, were fine and wearing masks and everything was clean, and they were using paper dishes and paper knives and forks. But once the people were inside the restaurants, they could take their mask off to eat, but they were taking their mask off and congregating as well to have drinks after. So that is not allowed. Please social distance, wear a mask if you're within six feet of people, because we don't need a resurgence in COVID so that we have to close these restaurants again. Okay? So please pay attention to what you're doing, and be responsible, be safe, and use common sense. Thank you. Okay, the first public hearing is on the mooring permit revocation. Again, the number for public hearings and public comment is 301-715-8592. And then the code to get in is 839-330-88477. All right? We are now holding a hearing on whether or not to overrule the permit revocation that was given by the harbor master and give Mr. Grace, I believe, back his permit. So, Mr. Harbor Master, Larry, would you take the stage here?
Yes, Mr. Council President, since this is Mr. Grace's request to have this hearing, I certainly would have no problem if he would like to present his case first, and then I will do a follow-up. It's up to you, sir.
Sure. Sure, thank you.
And this is an issue of a revocation, because I think like in court, the prosecution goes first, so you're the prosecutor.
All right, very good. You're the attorney, not me. As a review, several years ago, approximately three years ago, Mr. Grace put a mooring in our harbor and moored his sailboat, Benica, I believe is the name of the boat. It's a small wooden sailboat, an older wooden sailboat, down near the Pleasant Park Yacht Club. A while after it was in there, after seeing Mr. Grace go out there several times, he notified me that he had to go out to continually pump water out of the boat because the boat was taking on water. A little bit of water is not unusual for a wooden sailboat, but every two or three days to have to pump it out seemed like a fair amount of water. Shortly after the sailboat sank at its mooring, Mr. Grace, after a period of a couple of months, got some divers down to it, raised the sailboat up, brought it over to East Boston along Bayswater Street, waited for the tide to go out, pumped the sailboat out, put it back on its mooring. On, I have to refer to my notes because my memory's not what it used to be. On January, I take that back, on December 15th of 2018, we got a report of a red kayak that was found adrift near Belle Isle. We believed it was Mr. Grace's. We conducted a search of the area along with the Winthrop Police. Mr. Grace was finally located on the shoreline in East Boston. We told him where his, his boat was, his kayak was, we brought it over to Pleasant Park Yacht Club, he came over and picked it up. On January, the following January, January 12th of 2018, we had a call of a gentleman who fell through the ice while kayaking near Belle Isle Bridge. It turned out it was Mr. Grace. The whole entire area was iced over, from Belle Isle Bridge all the way out past, well past Atlantis Marina, going even a little farther beyond that. Mr. Grace was attempting to get to his boat in his kayak, fell out of his kayak, managed to get back into his kayak, and was stuck in the ice. It was the combined efforts of both my department, Winthrop Fire Department, and Massport Fire to try to rescue Mr. Grace from the ice. Massport Fire were had the only boat that could get through the ice. Our boats were, at the time, were not capable of getting through the ice to, to get Mr. Grace.
What was the date of that?
That was on January 12th of 2018 at approximately 8:22 a.m.
And the boat was still on the mooring?
The boat was still on the mooring. Mr. Grace apparently was trying to get out to the boat to pump the water out of it. We rescued Mr. Grace. We had to bring him down to the Deer Island Pier. It was the only pier that was available to us. Our own, the town pier, and the other piers were all iced in, we couldn't get to them. Mr. Grace, at that time, once we had EMS personnel check him out, made sure he was okay, he said he's going out to check his sailboat, and I'm going to read from the report now. "Mr. Grace was informed to refrain from going out in such dangerous conditions for his safety and the others', safety of others, and to wait for conditions to improve because we're putting rescuers at risk now going out in those conditions." And he was cited for negligent operation at that time. That case went to court, he, in court, he agreed to 20 hours of community service for that particular incident. The following, about a month later, February 12th, I'm sorry, February, Thursday, February 28th, I was informed and went down and checked that Mr. Grace's sailboat had sunk for a second time. I tried to reach him with the phone number I had, the phone number was unreachable, it was not working, it was an unreachable phone number. Since that time of February 28th, 2019, which was 16 months ago or so, his boat has sat on the bottom of the harbor. He has made no attempt to raise the boat, to my knowledge. I told him after it sank the first time that, whereas an older wooden boat, he needed to get it out of the water and have it checked to find out why it was taking on so much water on a regular basis. It was not a good condition. He apparently did not do that. Again, it sank a second time, and it remains on the bottom of the harbor. I told Mr. Grace after the first time his boat sank that I could not tolerate the boat continually sinking in the harbor, and that if it happened again, I would not be renewing his mooring permit, which is under town bylaw, is my authority. So when he went to renew this year, I denied his, his request for a mooring permit, and I told him, you know, he owns the mooring, it's his property, he can certainly get a contractor to pick the mooring up and take it out of town, take it somewhere else, I don't care where he takes it. But he's also responsible to get that boat out of the water. It's very near the channel, and it's a hazard to navigation. And that's another whole issue altogether, of him removing what's left of that sailboat that's been underwater for 16 months. That's pretty much it in a nutshell. I'd be more than happy to answer questions that anybody has.
Okay, the situation is that under Section 80 of the Regulations of the Town of Winthrop Rules and Regulations for Waterways and Public Landings, Mr. Grace has a right to appeal a decision by you to withdraw his permit. And that's why we're here today. This is Mr. Grace's opportunity, which he has a right to, under Section 80, to make his case and ask us to overturn the harbor master's decision to withdraw his, his permit. And the harbor master does have the authority to do that under Section 040, and our master is in, is responsible for enforcing all state and local laws, under Mass General laws and the Winthrop Waterways rules. So, Mr. Grace, the floor is yours now.
I appreciate that, and I do invoke the right to appeal. I appreciate especially the accuracy of the harbor master's account of events. If I can sort of work backwards from the worst-case scenario in my material loss to this, the most recent sinking, there are mitigating circumstances, which I hope people will listen to in, in deciding to continue a mooring at that location. And the circumstances are that my mooring penance were severed at one point, whether maliciously or from someone's idea of fun, I don't know, but I don't know who severed them, but that was prior to the second sinking. And the, the second sinking was under gale-force winds of 50 miles, 50 mile an hour gusts that the replacement penance put on there could not sustain. And so, my mooring structure, mooring structure that I put in, in 2017, should have, have lasted and been sufficient, but it wasn't under the grievous circumstances of destruction of property. Now, going back before that, there was one occasion at which the harbor master, and not to get him to choose sides in this, but he could attest to the fact that my mooring line again was severed by someone, and I don't know who this is, whether I'm supposed to be coordinating with surveillance efforts or what, but at one point, my mooring line was severed prior, prior to this most recent, and it was found adrift near the airport. And so, I got the... And so I, I got the telephone call from Mr. Powers to say that he had put it back on my mooring, which I was relieved, relieved to hear. You know, in general, I just, um, do everything I can not to, um, overstress, uh, town efforts, not to overwork people's efforts. And that is why when I fell through the ice and, and trying to get out to my sailboat, uh, to pump out water, I, 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 I really suggested, uh, community services as, as a remedy for, uh, the hours put in, uh, in my behalf. Now, at the time, yes, I fell through the ice and got back into my kayak, but there was such a, a, a response, I mean, I think it would have taken just five men just to throw a rope at that point, but there was such a response all around that I really, rather than row back ashore and just sort of, um, say hi, how are you doing all around, I went to the, um, the Mass Port Fire Boat when they arrived, and they, they picked me up, and I was appreciative of that, but, um, they, the captain of the Mass Port Fire Boat, uh, took the decision not to, uh, help me in sort of an SOS circumstance where, where my boat could have been pumped out, and his, his answer was that, um, the rains would be coming that next night, which they did. That was the night of the twelfth into the thirteenth. And, uh, it was the rains that sank my, my sailboat. Now, going back further, you know, the harbor master position and, and mind are, are sort of reaching the same point governmentally so far as what the area can sustain in terms of a boat out there. I'm not really, I'm not trying to, um, test the limits of it. I mean, I do look at, at the, um, the open expanse of it as sort of an obstacle course for adults, but, um, I'm not really trying to test the limits of it, uh, only, only to do with the fact that, um, when I put the mooring in, um, May of, uh, two thousand seventeen, it had been my dream to live on my own sailboat, and, uh, it was only under the sad circumstances of my mother's death in twenty fourteen that I could sort of amass the, the resources, uh, she left me a small sum to, to set up my own, um, my own mooring. So what I did was to, to acquire two boats that are of antique worth and, uh, of historical worth to, to the town of Winthrop. We know, uh, sort of the destruction that, that happened, um, close to Belle Isle recently where, um, the old, uh, what was it, a train fort, um, uh, just got swept away uh, in the hurt, in, in, in some big storm, and people have-
Mr. Grace, I, I don't want to interrupt you.
Sure.
But this, the issue is the harbor master has revoked your permit. You guys are not on the same side. He's revoked your permit, you are asking us to overturn the harbor master. So you're gonna give us a reason why we should overturn the harbor.
Granted, and the reason is that, um, that I'm, I'm working on, on acquiring another sailboat. Now, I have made efforts to raise the sailboat that's down there, but I've sent divers, and we can't, we still cannot find it. Uh, I need to find someone with a sonar, and this is sort of archaically slow, but I haven't been able to. Uh, and so I haven't been able to raise that sailboat yet, but I am working on acquiring another sailboat, and I just ask, since this is so, such a difficult fit, to get all the pieces to fit together, that the, that the mooring be, um, permit be continued, um, just, just for, just for the sake of placeholding it, I mean, the mooring is assigned to a specific sailboat. There is, it is conceivable that that sailboat, you know, could get raised, but before revoking, uh, the mooring permit, I just ask that, um, that the mooring itself, which I put in for twenty, twenty-five hundred dollars, be protected, uh, with a sticker.
Okay. Now that you've finished, uh, harbor master, do you have anything in rebuttal?
Uh, actually, several points. One, I did run into Mr. Grace down there one day, he did have divers in the water, um, looking for his sailboat. Uh, he had no diver's flag flying, uh, it was an extraordinarily dangerous condition, um, to have boats in that area, divers in the water, and no diver's flag flying. Mr. Grace claims that his mooring was, uh, seven. His, uh, excuse me, his mooring lines were seven. The first time it happened was shortly after his mooring was put in, and it wasn't his mooring lines, his mooring was put in. The mooring ball itself was found over, a couple of days later, was found over by, uh, I believe it was found over by Atlantis Marina. Mr. Grace claimed at that point that there'd been vandalism to his mooring. I asked him if he had any proof that there was vandalism. I mean, it's entirely possible that the shackle pin came loose, it was a brand-new mooring, it wasn't installed right. I said if he believed that it was vandalism, that he needed to contact the Winthrop Police Department, he declined to do so. As far as the other mooring lines being his, his, um, pennant lines being cut, they were not cut, they were worn through, um, because they were old, they, they can only last so long. If Mr. Grace believes that that boat, which was in poor condition, with, with all due respect, Mr. Grace, it might be an antique, but it was, and I'll agree with you at that, it was an antique. And a boat in that poor condition, a wooden sailboat that has sunk twice and has been on the water, underwater for the last sixteen months, is probably, at this point, almost a pile of timbers under the water. And I will say it again, Mr. Grace, you have the responsibility to remove that boat. You have made no effort, no serious effort, other than having divers trying to locate it, to remove that boat, and it's very close to the channel, and it's becoming a navigation hazard, it has to be removed. I have the authority under, under town bylaw, one of the reasons for revoking a mooring permit is repeated reports of a boat taking on water, while sinking twice, as far as I'm concerned, is pretty substantial evidence of taking on water. I, Mr. Grace and I have had several discussions about this, and I informed him after the first sinking, once again, that I would be revoking his permit if it happened again. It happened again, I revoked, I shouldn't say revoked, I refused to renew his permit for this year. His mooring's not going anywhere, I'm not gonna charge him or fine him for the mooring sitting there, but he is not gonna put another boat on that mooring. Not another antique boat, which we'll have the same problem with again. It is my responsibility as, and as the harbor master, to maintain a safe harbor, and that's what I'm trying to do. I feel for Mr. Grace, he's put a lot of time and effort into this, but I can't have a dangerous condition such as this continue in the harbor, and that's, that's my position.
Thank you, Harbor Master Powers.
If I can address those points?
Yes, you can address his last point.
Sure.
For the rebuttal.
Yes, so rebuttal. The point about the severed lines, I mean, these were new mooring penance, uh, put in, uh, in twenty seventeen, so there's no, there's no chance that, um, they, they severed due to getting worn. They were actually severed, and these were inch-thick, uh, meant to take the force of, of a gale, and, uh, they were cut completely through, and there's no reason I would, um, you know, run around about it, um, they, they were in fact severed, and I didn't go to the police, I, I probably should. But, um, that, that's one point, I thought that, I, I thought the problems would, would simply disappear, but, um, but here we are, and, um, the, um, the fact of the mooring, uh, there just has to do with the chance of, of putting another boat on it, uh, which I'm, which I'm working on right now, I have the funding, uh, partly amassed through my employer. So I'm working on, on putting another boat. Now, it doesn't, if we don't reach the same position, then it, it won't, uh, materialize at such a place, but, just to do with the fact that, that I've already spent so much effort putting something in where it isn't a hazard to anyone, it's, it's equidistant from anything around, and, uh, and even where it is, um, at the bottom of the ocean, it isn't a hazard to the channel because we can't find it, it isn't, um, it isn't upright. We can't, we can't see it right now, and, um, I even asked the harbor master, um, if, if the, if the harbor master boat had, had a sonar, the reply was negative. So I, I just have limited resources electronically in terms of, of establishing where it is. I'm not non-committal about, um, doing something about the, the antique or the wreckage, but, um, I, I'm at the, the step now where I just can't see, uh, where it is. And so I do, I do, um, I appreciate that, that, um, if the mooring itself, nothing will happen to it, but, um, in evaluating this, I have to figure out where the marine boundary is between Winthrop and East Boston, because if I were to move it, I'm wondering just sort of where it could be moved to, such that-
I'm sure those maps are there, and the harbor master could probably help you, uh, locate where the boundary is between Winthrop and East Boston if you want to move it to East Boston. I, I would assume that he would not have a problem with telling you, helping you in that way.
But he's gonna have to apply to the city of Boston for a mooring permit.
Well-
All right, I think-
Before we reach that, that point, I, I do beseech, um, that the, that the revocation of, of the mooring permit be, be overturned, just for one more chance, and, and any, any, any pri, any step prior, any, um, any, um, action leading to putting another boat out, out there can be established with the harbor master in advance, you know, such as appraisal, whether or not it will be the type of boat that, that would work, um, without taking on water at the location. And again, we can, we can set a definite limit about seasons, um, for keep, keeping it there. I do have more resources now so far as winter, uh, wintering, uh, with a boat a, and for myself. So I, I just beseech that, um, that we overturn the, um, the revocation of the mooring, just for one last chance in coordination. And if not in coordination, then it shouldn't, it shouldn't take place, but I do, I do request that it be continued.
We will, uh, take this up under all business, I see that the issue is on our agenda under all business for vote unless any one of the councils wants to, uh, move the agenda. We will take this up under all business. Harry Nunn, I want to thank, uh, Boris, in this, uh, appeal issue, and, uh, telling us the story from the both sides of you, and the council will make a decision under all business. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, let's move forward. Before the next public hearing, uh, which is coming up on the, uh, public hearing, uh, on the budget of fiscal year twenty-one, I want to make another announcement, and that announcement is that, uh, myself and the Board of Health have gotten together, and the Board of Health had a meeting today and voted at my request, and they, uh, have voted to rescind the ten o'clock PM curfew for the town of Winthrop. So effective immediately, I am rescinding the ten o'clock curfew for the town of Winthrop, so that the restaurants that are open can remain open past ten o'clock and go back to their normal hours. Okay? Does everyone have that? Curfew is rescinded. Next public hearing is a continued public hearing from the fiscal year twenty-one budget. Again, the phone number to call in on this is three zero one seven one five eight five nine two, and the ID number is eight three nine three three zero eight eight four seven seven. Hey, Austin, you wanna take the lead, or Anna?
Um, I, I honestly, at this point, I think maybe would it be appropriate for the Finance Commission to present the report?
Absolutely. Uh, and I was going to say that, I want to thank the Finance Commission for doing an outstanding job. They have, uh, been meeting on and on and on for the past few months to go over the budget, to, uh, help prepare the budget, and to give us a recommendation on the budget. And I have their recommendation here in front of me, uh, and I'm gonna ask Bob Nguyen, who is the chairman of the commission, to give us that recommendation orally. The letter or this four-page recommendation will be made part of the minutes of this meeting. Uh, and I want to specific- uh, Winthrop Finance Commission and, and name them specifically. Uh, Chairman Robert Nguyen, Barbara Flavin, Karen Chavers, Jan Trombley, Michael Goldberg, Brent Farrell, William Galt, and of course, uh, members of our own finance committee, James Luteri, Tracy Honan, and Richard Farino. I thank you all so much for your input and the hours that you've put into this. Go right ahead, Bob.
Thank you, Council President. This was an unusual, uh, budget process this year. We have COVID nineteen to thank for that. It's caused a lot of uncertainty, um, in a lot of areas. And I would like to thank the town manager and the CFO for doing a remarkably good job of putting together their initial budget, and then also putting together the revised budget, which is what our report was based on. The key issue thus far is state aid. It's the second-largest component of the town budget. And at this point, we normally know what that is, and we have a pretty good idea. However, this year, the state has pushed back its budget, therefore, the only figure we really had was the figure that the governor put in his initial budget, and that, uh, that generally is a low figure in the normal process. But because of what's going on, um, town manager and CFO decided to be conservative and adjust that a little bit lower. So hopefully, being positive, uh, when the town, when the state does complete its budget, perhaps we will actually get some additional, uh, funds which will help us, um, adjust the budget going forward. The, uh, key to the budget is the utilization of seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars of general stabilization fund, funds, um, to help support the budget to become part of the revenue stream for this year's budget. Typically, uh, stabilization funds would not be used for an annual continuing budgetary expense, but they are available for unusual circumstances and for financial crisis, and this certainly qualifies for that. But it's seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars went a long way to help supplement the other resources of revenue that come to the town. The largest source, of course, is the property taxes, and they were unaffected by COVID nineteen, fortunately. The town, um, budget is really comprised of three components, the general fund, which takes care of everything except the budgets under the enterprise funds and revolving funds. And the enterprise funds, the big budget there is, of course, water and sewer. The others are smaller budgets averaging maybe three hundred thousand dollars a piece, and that would be like the rake, the ferry, parks and recreation, harbor. And finally, we have a smaller component, the, um, revolving funds, and they are at a, have four or five small budgets that total less than two hundred thousand dollars. So the combined total this year, um, of our budget, our revenues and our expenses, is sixty-five million nine hundred eighty-six thousand nine hundred eighty-two dollars and forty-eight cents. And that's subject to revision, and one of the revisions I found out about earlier today from Anna is that our, um, budget, our charge for the regional dispatch, uh, decreased a bit, that's a good thing, but we, of course, had other, um, needs to fund that, to fund the debt excess cash. So that's still basically the same amount of funds for the whole budget. Now, the enterprise funds are a little bit unique because they're funded by user fees, and in the case of water and sewer, it's, everybody in town, uh, who pays water and sewer bills knows what that's all about. But the other funds, such as the ferry, the parks and rec, the harbor, and the rink, they're also based on some form of user fee. And the concern that we have as a finance commission, and we'd like to ask the council and the town manager and the CFO to kind of keep an eye on this, is that those, because of COVID nineteen, for example, the ferry is not operating. When it does begin operating, um, it may not be able to handle the normal number of passengers, so therefore, the amount of revenue, even when it's operating, will be lower. We have a- Um, we have a, resources come in from state and municipal, um, sources, Quincy being one of them. We don't know what impact this might ultimately have on our relationship with Quincy and the money that they contribute to the ferry. Similarly, on a smaller scale, the parks and rec. This summer, uh, we aren't sure what their program would be like. And they're funded by the participants' fees that the parents pay to have their kids participate and so on, the rink, of course, ice time. So we just would like everyone to be aware of these funds and to make sure that with what's going on, that they are, um, is balanced as much as they can be or that necessary cuts be considered. Because at the end of the day, if they don't make enough money to cover their expenses, they would look to the retained earnings if any. And if those are gone, then the town is responsible. At the end of the day, uh, we felt very comfortable with the town manager budget. We did have several suggestions, which you've seen in the, uh, letter. I've briefly run by them. And what has to do with a position called Town Planner. It's a new position. Um, the town manager put it forth as a position that would be funded effectively first initially. And then because of the change, uh, changed that to a January 1, 2021 funding, which reduced everything by half. Um, and our recommendation was to reduce that a little bit further and to make it an April 1 position. Uh, the second, uh, idea we came up with is that under shared expenses, there's vehicle costs, the fuel cost for vehicles. And it's at $110,000 in the budget, we suggested reducing it to $100,000, a reduction of $10,000. And then finally, DPW, vehicle maintenance. Now, we know we have a pretty new fleet and we want to maintain that fleet. But we felt that it's easier and less expensive to maintain a new fleet than it is to try and keep an old fleet on the road as we've been doing. So we thought we could reduce that from $40,000 to $10,000, save another 10 grand. The bottom line is that these changes amount to $47,500. And we would suggest that be transferred to the town council's reserve fund. And it could be used for purposes, and this one is unfortunately or fortunately, I guess, outdated, uh, to help the health department hire an additional person. And that's been taken care of, I found out from Anna later today, that has been dealt with, and that's a good news. Um, the inspectional services department, we met with, uh, Al Agui. He talked about the fact that with the state imposing new regulations on businesses, that there will be more need for inspectional services to go in and to, uh, do their work to make sure code enforcement's in place. And I'm sure there's a backlog to of other business that they should be doing. It's primarily Department of Part-Time Individuals. And he suggested he could use additional part-time help or more hours for his current staff, and we support that. And then, again, this was very recent, um, the town clerk sent an email and indicated that the state apparently is going to allow for more mail-in voting than they ever have. I guess they haven't allowed in the past, except for absentee ballots and things of unique nature. But now, because of people's concern about going to the polls, particularly in November, um, and being exposed to perhaps COVID or some other illness, the ability to vote through the mail is going to be available. And, uh, the town clerk is looking for some additional help for a short period, I guess, August through November. And we need to fund that. So these funds that we're suggesting be transferred into the town reserve could be utilized for that purpose, and there, I'm sure there are many others. The only, uh, capital item we had any concern with is the, um, Fort Banks Road Study, which is to be funded out of the capital stabilization account, I think it's $56,500. And we're not necessarily opposed to that. Part of the reason that study was being done is because the original study, uh, couldn't be found. And my understanding is it was recently found, maybe within the last two weeks. I think that that study, uh, if it's given to, uh, another firm to look at and analyze, would help reduce the cost of a, of a new study. And maybe the new study is not even really going to be necessary. Um, and the other thing is, we felt that since that's coming out of capital stabilization, uh, there's $50,000 coming out of the building stabilization fund and there's $750,000 coming out of the general stabilization fund, that that amount is a, is a lot. We don't use that kind of stabilization money in Winthrop. And what we are concerned about is how that would appear to those, uh, in the business of rating us for bonds in our credit rating. So we are a little concerned about funding the Fort Banks study at this point. Not that it shouldn't be done, but not now. And that would reduce the capital stabilization withdrawal by 56,500, I believe. So other than that, the stabilization, uh, excuse me, the capital spending and the capital fund looks very good. And I know that they have found some other sources of funds as well to help reduce the pilot money that was going to be used in the capital to get that back into the budget. So all in all, we are very pleased with the budget and, uh, we recommend it with suggested changes. And I thank again Anna, who was really, uh, made our life much simpler. She attended a lot of our meetings. She answered our questions. She got us information. We really appreciated Anna's help. And of course, the town manager for his, uh, well-thought-out budget. So that, that's it. Available for any questions.
Anyone have any questions above?
I do.
Peter.
Um, I first thank you to, uh, you and the committee for all the work you put in. Um, having been a member of this in the past, I know how, um, how much you guys do and it really is important to the town. Um, but for the Fort Banks study, I was under the impression that the reason that that didn't need to be done was because we had found a study that had already been done a handful of years ago. Is that the case or is it the case that you don't think that that needs to be done? Um, or is it like a matter of priority?
No, I think, I think that you're right. When this was first put on the table, the old study had not been found. It was found, though, within the last several weeks, um, after the budget was done, but within the last two weeks. So, um, what I thought is that study should be reviewed. And if it answers the questions, then there's no need for another study. If it doesn't, or it, or it's incomplete or not up to date, then that study could be given to the new, the company that's going to do that new study. That might help mitigate the cost. And also, we thought that from a financial point of view, not using stabilization funds now for that would be better for the town's financial, uh, overview.
Thank you.
All right, uh, anyone else? Is the Finance Committee of the council going to be making these amendments when we discuss the budget? Counsel Letary? You're on mute.
Yes, we are, Council President.
Okay, just want to make sure we know who is going to be doing that. Also, on the budget, uh, a town auditor, not a town auditor, but a council privately hired auditor, Dick Kingston also, uh, gave us an internal auditor report for the town council. Uh, and not to read his entire report, but it will be made part of the, uh, minutes of this meeting. But basically, um, what Dick Kingston is saying is that the town of Winthrop's updated fiscal uh, year 2021 estimated receipts budget of $5,769,219 represents a 10.9 decrease from the projected fiscal year 2020 actual. It is a 1.4% decrease from the estimates on the, uh, fiscal year 2020 recap. Uh, he compares this in, prior in his letter to, uh, other cities and towns that are reducing by the same amount or more, uh, by 10%, by 13%. Uh, in the fiscal year 2020, revenue projections hold true. The projections, the town will generate approximately $620,000 in estimated receipts related to free cash for the year. Uh, in fiscal year 2019, estimated receipts were $1,038,000. So I mean, we're looking at, at some problems, uh, as far as tax revenues and and money coming in. In addition, the fiscal year 2020 revenue-related tax links also generated free cash. But this year, it's down over $350,000 from fiscal year 2019. You know, and the town utilizes that free cash each year to fund mostly one-time expenses and emergencies. The current fiscal year 2021 budget includes utilizing $750,000 of the town's stabilization fund, which Bob went over in his report, uh, which diminishes the town council's reserve and utilizes a one-time funding source for ongoing operations. And in fin, in closing, he believes that, given the current situation and the uncertainty regarding fiscal year 2021 revenues, it is important for the town to utilize a conservative approach for projecting the town's estimated receipts. I think the town's current revenue budget approach is in line with what I've seen and heard in other communities. And approving the town's budget with current revenue projections does not preclude the town from increasing its estimated receipts and appropriations anytime during fiscal year 2021. Okay? So that is, uh, from our auditor, Dick Kingston, to the council. Now, Austin, any comments on the budget? Uh, Anna, who's going to handle this?
Um, they, I guess the only comment that we would have is that, you know, we, this is kind of like our, uh, third pass at this budget. We originally had something together for March before, uh, COVID. Uh, and then we had to stop everything and reassess. Uh, we presented in April after, um, Anna worked really hard to redo a fair amount of the numbers with Dick Kingston. Um, and then Anna came back to the Finance Commission, um, about a month ago in May with, um, an additional, um, reduction in revenues and potential changes that we can make to the budget. So this has been a really dynamic process this year. And I always kind of say, like, the budget is a snapshot in time. What the budget was on May 6th before coronavirus is different than what the budget was when I presented it in April, which was different than the budget that you see today. Um, and in all honesty, it's most likely going to be different than the budget that you all vote on three months down the road. So, um, you know, this is, this is one thing that I've liked about this is that we had the ability to utilize technology. Um, people became familiar with it in a completely different format this year. Um, and we've seen a fair amount of activity on the website, so I've been very happy with that. Um, and again, Anna is putting out like industry-standard budgets right now. And I really hope that we get some strong consideration from, uh, the GFWA Distinguished Budget Award. That's like the highest honor that a budget can get. Um, Anna is cranking out real budgets almost single-handedly. And, um, I give her all the credit in the world for that. And this has been the most difficult circumstance I've ever seen to put a budget together. So thank you to Anna on that. Um, and Anna, if you have anything, um, to add on to it, um, go right ahead.
No, uh, uh, thank you. And it's, it's been, um, it's been a pleasure to work with the Finance Commission over the past couple of months. It's, uh, been certainly a difficult year, to say the least. Um, I think one thing that I just want to make sure, uh, folks, um, are cognizant of is just that even prior to the COVID-19 crisis, the town, the town's budget has a structural budget gap issue wherein our, the revenues that we're raising each year to pay for ongoing expenditures have not been sufficient to meet, um, meet those expenses. And so COVID-19 has only served to make that a more difficult situation. So in light of the downward adjustments we've had to make, I just want to make sure that that point doesn't get lost, that, uh, even if we weren't dealing with COVID, we would still be having a difficult budget year. Um, and I think that, um, as we move forward, that will continue to happen. Um, and so just want to, um, encourage folks to please consult the electronic budget that we've launched this year. It will help you become more familiar, uh, with the various line items and how the town and the school and how the town spends money, um, and this, so that folks can understand sort of how those things are prioritized as we're having some difficult discussions about revenues and adjustments. Um, and then just, uh, briefly, on the downward adjustments that we had to make in May, um, the way to sort of think about this at a really simple level is that since we don't know our state aid number and we revise that downward based on the, uh, best information that we have, uh, we likely won't know that number, even sort of a, a baseline for that for another week or two when our Houseways and Means needs to put out their budget. Um, we probably won't have a final number until over the summer. But based on the best information available to us, that downgrade is, is around $765,000, I believe. Um, and so we're also, we ended up having to recommend a, a transfer from the town's general, general stabilization fund. So that sort of balances out that unknown state aid number. And then the additional downwards we made on excise taxes in light of COVID-19, um, we then made some downward adjustments within the actual line items on the town side. We did not take down the school appropriation. We, um, uh, worked to preserve that, the appropriation, the original appropriation in the town manager's budget there. Um, we took, made some adjustments there. And we also have keyed up some further contingency planning should other types of revenues deteriorate, um, should the financial situation due to COVID-19 continue on the current track and or worsen. Um, and so we're really trying to be as conservative as possible so that the town is not in a position to have to make really difficult mid-year adjustments, uh, should revenues, uh, decline beyond what we have anticipated thus far.
I take you, Vera. Any councillors have any questions? This is a public hearing on the budget, and this is the final public hearing. We'll be voting on this budget. It's the first issue of all business. Does anyone have any questions in the public hearing? Denise, uh, Larissa, do we have any people calling in on the budget for this hearing?
Karen Chavez has her hand up.
I don't see any note.
Do we have anyone?
Yeah, Karen Chavez.
Lauren Chavez.
Okay. Is she on, Karen?
Karen, can you unmute your phone?
Am I unmuted?
You're unmuted.
Karen, are you on?
Yes, am I unmuted?
You are unmuted. Thank you for all the work you do on the Citizens Finance Committee.
All right, I'm not calling as a member of the Citizens Finance. I'm calling as a citizen.
Yes, I still want to thank you.
Okay. Um, everybody on the Finance Commission has heard my spiel before, but I'm going to give it to you again because all the councillors did not attend our meetings. I want you all to remember, the beginning of July of 2021, when we start to do the next budget, we're already $750,000 in the red from the stabilization fund contribution. $150,000 from union negotiations. These union negotiations, if they occur over the year, they're not currently in the budget. Also, $205,000 for furloughs, which is projected. Granted, these furloughs may not take, may, may not happen, but if they do, and they're for six months, that means that beginning of next year, July 1, that these jobs are not six-month jobs, they're 12-months jobs. And also, the non-union longevity, it's only $13,000. But I don't know how much longer non-union people are going to not want some sort of a rage. As far as the plan is concerned, I am 100% against hiring anybody. The plan is positioned as for $47,500. The Finance Commission brought it down to what, um, about half of that. I suggested, and I still suggest, that you put a dollar in as a placeholder in that budget the next July 1. The exception to not hiring, I believe, is the health and inspectional services. Health because of the pandemic that we were just in. This is not going to end come July 1. It's probably something that's going to go on for another year until a vaccine becomes available so that we can stop it. And inspectional services is the other. They have a half position, they want to make a full position. This will revenue, make, bring in revenue. These people get out into the field, they find people, they look at houses, they look at things going on, and they're able to bring in money. And as always, we always have had a revenue problem. Our expenses and our revenue do not match. We don't know what the solution is. We've talked about it. I'm sure that both the town manager and the CFO, Assistant Town Manager, have talked about it. I don't know what the answer is. But right now, we're in a very, very delicate situation. And before you vote on this budget tonight, think about all the amendments that we made on the Finance Commission. Some of the things, I don't agree with the, with the, the plan a position. I, I voted no on that. Um, and I think everybody knows that. But I think that we need to look at everything very closely and think about everything before you start voting.
Okay, thank you very much, Karen. Is there anyone else that called in for this public hearing?
Steve Callahan has raised, his hand raised.
Steven.
Yes.
Unmute this, okay.
Yeah, uh, I just wanted to, uh, first thank, uh, Bob, Bob Nguyen and, and the entire commission for their review of the budget. I just. I just, I wanted to comment just on one recommendation of the, uh, vehicle maintenance budget. Um, we did, we did get the grant this year and, and we're very, very happy, very much helped out the department. That said, we still ha- we have forty registered vehicles that we use daily. We were able to replace fifteen of those. Um, so there's still twenty-five vehicles that, uh, of, of, are high in age, some still over fifteen years old. Um, I just want to be very cautious, uh, about pulling back that budget, knocking it from forty thousand down to ten thousand if I, if I heard, uh, Mr. Winn.
Forty to thirty.
I'm sorry, it was forty to thirty?
Yeah, I think, I think Bob kind of halfway through his, it was forty to thirty, a ten thousand reduction.
O- okay, even so, uh, and I understand that we, we gotta, we gotta look at all places. I just want to be very careful. These aren't, um, one, we, we do want to keep the upkeep of the new vehicles. It's very, very important. But again, these aren't, th- th- they're vehicles that have worked every single day. So it's not, I mean, yes, the engines are, are, are new, but they're still dump trucks and pickup trucks that are used daily. Mirrors break, tires get flat, a- a- and you start reducing this maintenance budget, which for forty vehicles, a forty thousand dollar budget doesn't go that far. That's a thousand dollars a year. I mean, most people on personal vehicles will spend a thousand dollars on their personal car in a, in a year. These are vehicles that are, that have worked very, very hard and they're relied on, uh, and, and storm and emergency events, so I just want to be very careful that we don't make a decision that we end up taking money from another part of the budget and, and lose a service somewhere else because the vehicles can't be, we can't be without the vehicles, so the, the, we will have to maintain them with, with other money. I just, just wanted to make that point clear that there is fifteen new vehicles, but there's still twenty-five older vehicles in the fleet. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Steven. Uh, does anyone else have any comments during the public hearing on the fiscal year twenty-one budget? Any other call-ins?
There's one other caller. I'm gonna see if they have any comment. Uh, there we go. Uh, Colin User, do you have a public comment on the budget?
No.
Thank you.
Hearing no other questions and no other call-ins on the budget, we will move on into public comment on all issues, and I will close this public hearing. Motion to close the public hearing, please.
Motion.
Motion's been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion made in second to close the final public hearing on the fiscal year twenty-one budget. Uh, please take a roll call.
Regero.
Yes.
Council Placot. Council Damaco.
Yes.
Council Christopher.
Yes.
Council Honan.
Yes.
Council Freeno.
Yes.
Council LaConte.
Yes.
Vice President Leteri.
Yes.
President Boncory.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, motion is carried. That public hearing on the budget is now closed. We will move into public comment. Do we have any people online for public comment?
Uh, Bill Rice is, uh, la- is, um, on.
All right, Bill, are you on? Hello? You have him muted?
No, he is unmuted. Mr. Rice, are, do you have a public comment?
Can you guys hear me now?
Yes, we can.
There we go.
How you doing, Bill?
Good, good. Um, I just wanted to make a comment, um, um, about section five, uh, specifically the comments that were made by Mr. Faison concerning, um, the, um, um, the, uh, water and sewer rates, uh, specifically the, uh, the potential punitive charges that would be levied against high-rate users and, uh, potentially penalizing homeowners and businesses is because they're labeled as high use. Uh, I, I know you guys don't have any answers for this right now, and I just want to know, is there gonna be a public hearing concerning that? Um, furthermore, I'd also like to know if there's a public hearing about this, this stormwater fee that he, that was spoken about as well.
I can answer that, Council President. Um, so yes, there, there would be public hearings and, um, involved with this. Um, if we were to, um, fund a study to be done or some type of consult, and we would have a public forum about it because, um, I'm just giving examples of how different communities tier, um, their rates to try to find some more equity um, in, in the system, um, not necessarily, um, choosing one or the other. That, that's what this study and the process would be for.
No, I totally understand. I just want to make sure there's gonna be a public forum to discuss it.
Yeah, 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 yeah. No, I mean, the, no, it doesn't make a good decision to make this type of call behind doors, especially, behind closed doors, and especially when you're splicing up a rate like this type of thing, so, uh, we'd have public input on it and make sure that the information was available and as transparent as possible.
Exactly, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, any other public comment?
Yes, we have, uh, Wendy, Wendy Page.
Wendy, you on?
I am. Good evening.
Nice to see you, hear from you anyway.
Nice to hear and see all of you. I have two quick, um, comments and suggestions. I know that there's been conversation regarding the Point Shirley parking, and after having, uh, some really fun dialogue with some folks in town, one of the things that I thought about, I know that we do not make our parking stickers mandatory, even though they are free. However, an interesting way to help us increase our excise tax by those people who choose to have their cars not on our public streets would be that everyone had a Winter Parking sticker, and if they did not and their car wasn't registered here, well, maybe there's a little increase for some funding. Just throwing that out there is something maybe that can be thought of or looked at. Don't know the legalities around it, just a suggestion. The additional I would, that I really wanted to, to speak about, I want to thank our town manager. I was very moved by his commentary and, and his own personal truth that he needed to speak during the last town council meeting. I applaud some of the town councilors who I know were trying to find a way for the town council to come up with making a statement as well. Winthrop has slowly, um, and steadily become a more diverse community, and there are those of us in this community who are trying very hard to make sure that those who are here always feel welcome. And with the current political climate of certain things like race, gender, um, and sexual orientation, we need to be careful, and we need to make sure that when people who represent all of us, you know, don't make a specific statement, that we then turn around and why, or, or ask for it to become part of who we are as a council and as our leaders in our town. But I wanted to thank our manager and for people to know that it was important to be said and it needed to be said in the opinion. Opportunity.
You're welcome, Wendy.
Thanks, Wendy.
Is there anyone else on for public comment?
No, I don't.
Again, the, we have. I'm sorry, Larissa, is this someone?
No, I don't see any other hands up.
Okay, I'm just gonna give you the number again for the last public comment. The number is three oh one, seven one five, eight five nine two, and the call-in number after that is the eight three nine, three three zero, eight eight four seven seven. Call, type in that number, and you will be on the next public comment. All right, moving on, move on to correspondence. And we've received quite a bit of correspondence. I just received one as we were talking, uh, to Wendy, and it was from Bill Smith, who wants to express his opinion that he feels that we should support the Health Department in their, uh, quest for more funds. Okay, as we, uh, have three different, or four different issues that people have been corresponding about, that the pilot program, parking program in Point Shirley, uh, we have the following people sending notices opposed to the parking program, and that was Allison Casey-Dwyer, uh, Leah Hart Tenon, Stephen Hines, Susan Leonard, Samantha Bracy, Julia Wallace, Courtney Woodward, and Bob Carroll. We had, uh, calls for favoring of the parking at Point Shirley, and, uh, that were from Mike Demento and Mark Citro. And, uh, Mark Citro also, uh, wanted to address the traffic at the point. Uh, we had message from Alex Tebans wanting the, uh, the council to comment on the issues that are now facing the country. Uh, we had Siri Julie Fairchild requesting the Winter Police Department to consider eight can't wait use of force policies. And then we had a bunch of, uh, comments, uh, in support of Town Manager Faison's delivered statement at the six-two-twenty meeting from Donna Riley, Diane Arakis, Eleonora Foley, Frank Constantino, Vincent, uh, Winuski, and the Whiting family. Uh, and Donna Riley also, uh, made, uh, a move that she thinks we should form a Human Rights Committee here in Winthrop. I also received calls, uh, correspondence from two other people who I don't even think are from Winthrop, uh, who's, because, uh, it didn't sound familiar, and they didn't claim to be from Winthrop, who were asking, uh, for us to defund the police and give the money to social services. And that's all the correspondence I have. Denise, do you have further correspondence, or Larissa?
Uh, no, I don't. I'm all set with that.
Okay. Denise, you all set?
I'm all set, yep.
Okay. All right, then let us move on to committee reports.
Council President.
Yes, committee.
Thank you, Council President. So the Finance Committee met last Thursday, and we had promised to do a meeting, um, to enable councilors to get a better grasp on the budget. Uh, we do want to thank the two councilors, Councilor Christopher and Regero for, for coming to the meeting. Um, they asked numerous questions. We, we talked about the budget and all sorts of forms, and, uh, again, uh, echo Bob, uh, Bob Winn's comments that we did thank, uh, Austin and Anna for their, uh, commitment to this budget. It was grueling as Bob went over, and it was, uh, it was quite an experience. Uh, you know, I, I know the Finance Commission put in, uh, over sixty hours worth of work on it, and, uh, you know, Rich has been around a little bit. Tracy, this was her first call-up round, so you kind of jumped right into the deep end there, and, and thank you both for your help. Um, but the other item on the agenda was the senior tax work-off program. Um, now, this is something that the town's done for several years now, and it's a fantastic program. And, uh, we got correspondents from the state, and we had to discuss whether we would be able, whether we would make a recommendation to continue that this year, uh, with the, with the information we had. Um, and the way the program works, we thought it was gonna be very difficult to do that. The program, um, first of all, you can't just give, uh, an abatement, basically. Uh, it has to be worked off, so we couldn't just, we had talked about maybe just picking twenty-five people, uh, but that wasn't an option. Uh, the money also has to be spent by, uh, there's a date certain where the money needs to be allocated for, which is October. Um, you know, now this would be where seniors would be picked totally randomly. Um, so it could be anybody over sixty-five. We don't know who they are until they're picked out, and they would work with certain department heads or, or certain departments and, and provide a great service. And there's been fantastic response from the department heads that have worked with these people. Uh, but we just thought this year with the total uncertainty of when public buildings are gonna be open, how they're gonna be open, um, and just the, the fact of trying to keep at-risk people, um, or a little higher at-risk people, um, kind of isolated if, if possible, we thought, unfortunately, it would be, uh, in the best that our recommendation was unanimous to, to suspend the program for this year only and hope to bring it back next year. And that was all we had discussed at the Finance Committee. And that will be coming up under Old Business.
Okay.
Uh, Millerfield will continue. Um, Millerfield has, has met about, well, concerning the field house, which we feel now is as close to be incomplete as we can. We're basically in the furniture. The FF and E portion, which is just building it out, furniture fixtures and equipment, mostly for the concession area. Um, you know, Stephen Keller and, uh, and Rich have been extremely helpful in getting this project done in the time when Anna, uh, we've, we've come up with some obstacles as we do in every project, but it's worked out really good. Uh, there were a couple minor things, but we hope to, well, first of all, there, there hopes to be a, a high school graduation there, I think, on July twenty-third. We hope to get an occupancy, a COA, I, I believe, by the end of this month. Um, and we hope that that field will be able to be used. We, we think it will for graduation. Um, and we hope to have a dedication to the field in the beginning of September. That date is still to be determined. We also have had continuing discussions, um, concerning the shed at the golf club, uh, and a potential dog park, and to see what money we have left over, uh, from the project. We're also, there's a meeting, I think, tomorrow, um, a joint meeting with the Millerfield Subcommittee, uh, Construction Subcommittee and the SBAC Construction Subcommittee to discuss the tennis courts and the parking around the tennis courts and, and improvements that are going to be made there. So we could have more to, uh, to discuss about that at our next council meeting.
Okay.
And, and that's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, uh, Council Regero, do you want to speak about your virtual meeting?
Uh, yes, Council President. Um, thank you. On Saturday, June sixth, I hosted a virtual coffee hour with some Precinct Six constituents. Uh, the conversation lasted for about ninety minutes. I started off with a brief slide deck outlining our town government and some of the larger topics that the council of the town are focusing on, and then we broke out into an open discussion. Uh, some of the topics that we touched on were COVID, the progress of the old middle school redevelopment site, traffic enforcement in particular neighborhoods within our precinct, relations with DCR on Winter Beach, and the remodeling of the tennis courts in front of the high school. Uh, all in all, I'd say it was a pretty productive meeting, and I'll be trying to do these periodically. Hopefully, the next one will be live and in person, and I did make one promise that I would supply the coffee at the next one if it is live and in person. So I just want that on the record, Denise. But otherwise, that's all I have for my precinct report.
Thank you. Council Christopher, your joint meeting with the, um, Board of License and ordinances, which have gone by the wayside right now, but have you, uh, had meet, you had meetings, is that correct?
So the last meeting, the last joint meeting that we had with the Board of Licensing happened before the last meeting, and, um, I think I reported on that, but, um, you know, pretty much what we had done was, um, we had tried drafting an ordinance. Um, we had one that everybody voted on and was supportive of. Um, and I still think that it's a good ordinance and that we can move forward with it beyond the governor's, um, beyond the timeframe that the governor's executive order covers. Um, so I think that it was not a futile effort, and I think that it's something that ma- many members of the community have expressed hope that we continue next year, uh, with the outdoor dining. And I, um, and I intend on having the committee to come together to kind of, um, figure out what a permanent, um, what a permanent ordinance would look like in Winthrop, because, uh, the one that we did write, we, we did have a sunset clause in it. So, um, the next one will be more permanent and, um, hopefully will serve us for a long time.
Okay. Has there been any progress within the joint committee for the, um, zoning of the middle high school?
We are setting dates for, uh, public hearings and figuring out what we're, what those meetings are going to look like, who's gonna participate, um, the types of information, things that we're gonna talk about. Um, so I think we have two tentative dates, and we have a meeting on Thursday, um, to discuss these, these things. Um, so, uh, that.
When is the meeting?
Thursday, we have a posted meeting.
Okay. A joint meeting between Council Honance Committee and York Committee, is that correct?
Yep.
Okay, excellent. All right, Public Safety Committee, uh, Barbara, do you have anything on the road? Barbara?
Doc.
Are you with us?
All right, I'm, takes me a while to, yes, I am, and I took me a while, oh.
All right, it takes me a while to, yes, I am. And I took me a while. Oh, where am I? Yeah, am I muted now? No, I'm not.
No, you're open.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, all right. I believe that I have a point of order here. Our committee met a week ago Monday and we unanimously passed to come to the council for a vote the pilot program for Point Shirley for residents. However, since then, and we did have some input at the committee meeting, we had some people who attended the meeting Zoom and contributed greatly to it. But since then, we have gotten a lot more correspondence. And almost all of it is against the pilot program. So I would say that against in the correspondence is running four to one against it. That makes me think that we need to take a little more time on this issue and explore some other options. So Council President, how do I move forward on this? Since I have a, a committee vote that's unanimous to present it to the council for a vote.
All right, as soon as you have a committee vote to present it, we, we take it on the, you know, we have a motion put forward to the council for the next, the next meeting.
Okay, even though I think we should take more time on it.
Well, then, then you can request that we just put it over to the next meeting. It's very simple.
Okay.
Okay, and we can take a vote on that.
Thank you.
All right.
Oh, all right.
Okay. Council LaCanti, are you with us?
Oh, I'm here.
Okay, good. All right, let's move on to the Town Managers' Report.
So briefly, again, just want to thank the community, those who had positive and negative reactions to my statement last week. I know it was kind of abrupt and I didn't give many people on the council time to react to it. But I appreciate all the feedback. Anyone who would like to kind of have conversations about this with me, I'd be more than happy to. I, I have information to back up what I'm saying. So I'd be more than happy to engage in any conversation about the topic. Instead of people going on social media and talking about me and my statement, I don't have, nor do I participate in the local private groups of Winthrop. So although those conversations are happening, they're lost on me. So although there was positive and negative reactions in there, those didn't really come across my plate. So if anyone would like to talk with me about it, again, my office is open, my email is always there. And I'd be more than happy to have further conversations about the topic. Just quickly, I am speaking with the chief concerning our internal use of force policies. We're going over those with outside counsel. I'm working with the Metro Managers' Commission about police reform items as well. You know, Chief Delante has done a very good job with updating the policies within the department and seeking out accreditation. And the department is coinciding with a lot of the things that are happening in the state of moving in the right direction. And Massachusetts at the state level from the Chiefs group, I can't, I can't remember it, Mass Chiefs Association, I believe. You know, things like chokeholds and shooting at cars, moving away from you and people fleeing and stuff like that. That's all against the rules under the Mass Chiefs Association already. So what we're trying to do is look at kind of some of the things happening across the world, especially in this country and the region, and figure out how we can apply those to Winthrop. So not engaging in some of the larger conversations at this point in time, but really focusing on the use of force policies for right now and using it as a base to build from. Also, just wanted to kind of thank everyone. This is our last meeting of the fiscal year. This has been an insane fiscal year. I can't, unless next year tops this, I can't imagine anything else as crazy. So just wanted to thank the council for sticking in there with these Zoom meetings and things like that. My staff as well for figuring out Microsoft Teams and Zoom over the course of a week and for the entire community. The idea that these meetings have flipped into this format in a matter of like days has been very impressive. So although we all long for everything to kind of go back the way that it was, I do and all of my staff does appreciate the flexibility the community has given us during these trying times. So not much else there. Meredith has been still providing updates to the community through Larissa about our COVID levels. Those are most likely going to go to a Monday through Friday update basis. So that we can have a few weekends away from having COVID update calls with my internal staff. But that's only for this summer because we do project things turning potentially for the worst in the fall. So we can ramp those right back up because now we have this. So again, thank you very much for everyone. I know this has been, I said it before, but trying time with the budget, trying time with everyone's patience and things like that. And you know, it weighs on everyone. It doesn't just weigh on one person or another. So I appreciate all of the understanding and the changes that we've gone through. And look forward to getting past this budget and starting fiscal twenty-one anew. So thank you, everyone.
Thanks, Austin.
Thanks, Austin.
Thank you, Austin. And I want to say that the only comments I received and I received many comments were all positive about your statement. I also want to thank the people of Winthrop for participating so peacefully in their protest last weekend. And many of our counselors joined that protest as well as our representative and our state senator. And it was a well-run, well-organized and very peaceful protest. And I am proud of people of Winthrop for acting out that way. And I'm proud of our police officers for keeping it safe and making sure that there was no problems like so many other towns have had with protests. But I, I was impressed. And I went by the protest and I went up to, to the city hall afterward where there was a group that had marched up to the police station. And it was kept well under control. Everybody got their message out. The protest was heard and nobody was harmed. So I'm, I'm very happy that Winthrop stepped out to support this cause. Also, Austin, just a question. Any indication about when we can maybe not have a Zoom meeting, but get back into town hall and run a meeting?
Very good question. So right now, we are, I believe, about two weeks out from having the physical infrastructure within the building built out for the staff to resume under kind of phase two guidelines, working within the building. What, what we're trying to explore is how then, once people are back staffing a fair amount of the offices, what does that look like for the public to interact with it? So we're still exploring that. That said, I think at this point in time, and you kind of bring up having meetings in the Harvey Room. The Harvey Room seems like a good location to potentially have. There's a separate entrance directly from the street. It could be a good place for the public to interact with different departments in an enclosed area so that people don't have to go about the entire building and we don't have to be like masked police and stuff like that. So we're trying to figure out how that would work, potentially having like the clerk's office have it for public interactions for two mornings a week. The veterans office gets it for the afternoon on Tuesdays, those types of things. We're still trying to figure that out. But I think when we do open back to the public, it's going to be a very kind of contained interaction that we're going to try to have. You know, we can't do curbside stuff, but we're going to try to figure out how to best limit the physical interactions that people have as much as possible in the building. And then that said, with council meetings eventually, that room itself, we could only comfortably put ten people in there. So we'd be looking at the council. You guys can choose between me and Denise who you would want to have there in the room with you. But we'd have limitations of how many people we could have in the room. So it may be something that we're looking at having meetings with half of the council potentially in person, kind of going through.
Hybrid Zoom meetings.
Yeah, with WCATV with some type of video element to it. But unfortunately, it seems like the Zoom stuff and these remote meetings may be here for a little while because I mean, we can't have public comment the same way. We can't have like presentations the same way and stuff like that. So we're going to, again, every one of these Zoom meetings, I think, goes a little bit better. So it's continuing to figure out how to have these meetings and have the information. So even earlier when we were talking about some of the budget stuff, Phil, I'm thinking like, we should have that up on the screen. We should have those exact numbers so the public can interact with it. So we're going to keep learning from this and trying to make it better and better. And we're going to try to figure out how to get some people into the building. It is just a slow process, getting these materials, getting the plexiglass built out, all those things. Every other business place is looking for the same exact stuff, the same PPE, the same hands sanitizer, all that stuff. So we're doing our best and it's coming and we're making progress.
Thank you. Thank you, Austin. Anybody have any questions for Austin on this Town Managers' Report? Any counselors have any questions? All right, hearing them, we'll move on. The next thing on the agenda is the school department update. And I attended the school committee meeting last night. The meeting was held on June fifteenth at six PM. Everyone was in attendance. They passed all the warrants and payables and budget transfers that were going on. There were a couple of key issues that were happening. They've, Superintendent has put together a health safety guidance for the reopening of schools. It's quite a, an extensive forty-three page guidance that you're going to have to follow to reopen any kind of the schools. The summer program is, is up and they're getting the building ready in there. They're doing some remote, some hybrid, but they have a situation with a special educational students have to get first preference and they may be able to be inside the building. Coming in the fall, we don't know any dates yet. They're anticipating a school opening date to be given by the Director of Education for the state by Friday, by this Friday. So we will know what the dates are. But the Winter Public Schools kindergarten registration is now open and it opened on June fifteenth and it will be open through August fourteenth. So if you have a kindergarten student ready to register, go online, there's a form to fill out and get them registered because the deadline on that is August fourteenth. There was also a survey that the school department put out to the nineteen hundred student families. And they got back six hundred and sixteen surveys returned and they're going to put that together and publish it. And it, it's a very extensive survey. They asked questions about the COVID problem, about stress, about economics, about just how everybody is, is feeling in the town. And the responses were, were quite interesting to look at. They were, they were, you know, covered everything from poverty and, and lack of food to education and, and stress and feelings about issues. So those surveys will be available very soon. I think they, they just finished printing them and I saw the charts. But they'll be out for the public very soon. Okay, and that is the school department report. Moving on to Old Business, first item on the agenda is fiscal year twenty-one budget. They have a motion to accept the budget.
Council President.
Terry?
Yes, there are many motions involved with this, first starting with the operating budget, then going through the enterprise funds and capital.
I understand.
So why don't we get going?
Yeah, let's get going. The first motion is to accept the budget.
Motion in accordance with Charter of Town of Winthrop, I move that the town council vote to adopt Town Manager's proposed annual general fund budget for fiscal year twenty-one as set forth in the Town Manager's revised submission dated May twenty-six, twenty twenty, inclusive of personnel salaries and operating expenses set forth therein. And that to meet said appropriation, the town shall raise and appropriate inappropriate from the following other available funds for the summer fifty-three million, eight seventeen, five fifty-five or take any other action relative thereto, including seven hundred and fifty thousand from stabilization fund, thirty-nine thousand, five twenty-two from cemetery lots, five thousand from cemetery perpetual care fund, one hundred and thirteen thousand from regional nine-one-one, sixty-eight thousand, one hundred and twelve from technology fund, twenty thousand from fiscal year, sixteen harbor dredging feasibility account and ten thousand, five hundred fifty-four dollars from fiscal eighteen Town Manager recruitment account.
Okay, that motion is from committee? So it doesn't need a second, is that correct?
Uh, no, it does not need a second, but no, it does not need a second.
All right. Motion is before us on the adoption of the general fund operating budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-one. Motion ID is TCM twenty oh three six. Is there any discussion on it?
Yes, Council President. So we, I'd like to start by making amendments from the Finance Commission. And there are one, two, three, four amendments from the Finance Commission. One first amendment would be I meant to reduce line under shared expenses, reduce line five four eight one hundred, vehicle fuel from one hundred and ten thousand to one hundred thousand or a ten thousand dollar reduction. Now, these, all these motions are going to be to accumulate a sum of money that then the motion will be made to move that money to Town Council Reserve. Or we could do with them one at a time like that. So the first one is to reduce vehicle fuel from one hundred and ten thousand to one hundred thousand. It's a hundred, it's a ten thousand dollar reduction.
All right, is there any discussion on that motion?
So this was discussed.
Yeah, Council LaCanti.
I was just, had a question for Anna on what your thoughts were on this amendment.
For the vehicle fuel, I think in light of the current projections for fuel costs, it is a reasonable item to, to evaluate. We, the Town Manager and I had already make, had already made a downward adjustment to vehicle fuel. This would be a bit more aggressive, but I don't think fully unrealistic in light of the low fuel cost. I would have worked very closely with Director Calla to ensure that we are closely monitoring the fuel spending cost during the year. Should fuel prices increase as we get into the fiscal year, we may need to move some things around internally or potentially come to the council at the end of the year, next year to do some cleanup there. But I do not think it is a unreasonable sort of request to move some funds out of there for another item at this, at this point in time than fuel prices.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Council President.
Any other questions on the motion?
Just to make a statement, this, again, from the Finance Commission. As Anna said, this line was originally a hundred and twenty-five thousand and reduced by Anna and Austin to one-ten or a twelve percent reduction. The commission felt that with fuel prices down roughly thirty-one percent, so we felt comfortable reducing the number another ten to make it a twenty percent reduction, still far short of what the fuel savings should be. The fiscal twenty budget was a hundred and thirty and the fiscal nineteen actual was one-twenty-one with thirty-one percent higher prices. So I make that motion.
Okay, a motion is to amend the budget by reducing the items for fuel oil from one hundred and ten to one hundred thousand. Any further discussion? Hearing no one take a roll call vote?
Council Jero?
Yes.
Council Placat?
Yes.
Council DeMarco?
Yes.
Council Christopher?
Yes.
Council Honan?
Yes.
Council Perrino?
Yes.
Council LaCanti?
Yes.
Vice President Latiri?
Yes.
President Boncory?
Yes, passage unanimously.
Okay, Council President.
Next amendment, please.
Coming out of Finance Commission. We, and DPW budget reduce line five four three, seven hundred, vehicle maintenance from forty thousand to thirty thousand, a ten thousand dollar reduction. In the thought process, again, as Bob stated, with many new vehicles, hopefully leads to lower costs. The budget in fiscal twenty was thirty thousand, so it was increased. And, and I think there was a lot of discussion about what DPW Director Calla was saying that even though we do have, you know, roughly thirty-five percent new vehicles. Another thing I don't even think Steve said, but this line kind of wasn't funded the way it was, maybe the way it should have been in years past. So even though that, you know, it does look like you should be lowering it, there's a lot of cost that he needs to, to to maintain these vehicles. And we did think in light of the circumstances that a ten thousand dollar cut was reasonable.
Okay, so the motion is to amend the DPW budget maintenance item from forty thousand down to thirty, is that correct? Okay, so the motion is to amend the DPW budget maintenance item from forty thousand down to thirty, is that correct?
Yes.
I believe you had said twenty to thirty, it's from forty down to thirty.
Forty to thirty, yes.
And it's a ten thousand dollar saving. All right, is there any discussion by any counselor on the issue? Hearing none, would you please take a roll call vote?
Councilor Jero.
Yes.
Council Plakat.
Yes.
Council DeMarco.
Yes.
Council Christopher.
Yes.
Council Honan.
Yes.
Council Frino.
Yes.
Council LaCanti.
Yes.
Vice President Leteri.
Yes.
President Boncory.
Yes. Amendment carried.
The next amendment is from the grants office, reduce line five one 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 zero zero salary from forty-seven thousand five hundred to twenty-three thousand seven fifty or a twenty-three thousand seven fifty reduction. This line was originally funded at ninety-five thousand dollars for a new position, i.e. planner. Funding was coming from the savings in the previous assistant town manager position. In the revised budget, it was cut in half to show a January first twenty-one start date, instead of a July first start date. The commission had much discussion from ranging to keeping it at January first to not funding it until July first. The commission ultimately compromised to an April first twenty-one start. Most of the discussion involved just an additional hire, which, you know, many thought that it's very difficult to add a person when we're talking about, you know, potential layoffs and furloughs. So that was a motion that came out, well, from the finance commission.
Okay, so the motion is to reduce the item, it covered a planner from the beginning of the year and that is to reduce it from forty-seven thousand five hundred to twenty-three thousand seven hundred and fifty, is that correct?
It is, and we felt that that is inconsistent with, the thing that that does do is it gives us a planner. So, I mean, I don't think anybody thinks that we would hire somebody April first and let them go July first. So this pretty much does guarantee a, well, it does guarantee a planner for fiscal twenty-two, which is another, you know, it's an expense, but we think there could be great benefits from this. So to just delay it one quarter, we thought it was a savings. It was a position worthy of hiring in a climate where we, we really didn't want to make any new hires.
Okay, is there any other discussion? Any councils have any discussion on it? Austin, do you have anything you want to say on it?
I actually saw Council Christopher's hand up, so I defer to Council Christopher first on this.
Um, yeah, so I respectfully disagree with the commission's recommendation on this. First and foremost, I think that we're entering a time where there's going to be a lot of available funding for grants, economic development and across the board. And that's something that when we had the students from Tufts in, they said that that was something that a planner could help you with. So I, I want to make sure that when going through this time where, where staffed up as other communities are and that we're able to apply successfully for these funds that might be available through the state and federal government. My whole time that I've been on the council, this has been a huge priority for individuals in the community. And at the time, we, we just didn't have the flexibility in the town manager's office or whatever it was over the years. I think that this is a critically important position. And if we ought to just delay this into April, my, my concern is, is that we would lose a window of opportunity to have somebody in there who could be applying for grants and we, we might lose out. There's only so much capacity that the, the town manager's office has and we're competing with communities that have, you know, a lot more resources than a Winthrop does. And so I think to give us a fighting chance for a lot of these applications, we want to put ourselves in the best possible position to get this, get these different funding streams and to help us plan for the future. And so I think that we should go with the town manager's recommendation in this case.
Austin?
Sure. So when I was hired for Winthrop, there was a town manager, there was an assistant town manager and there was a CFO. The CFO decided to resign early in my tenure and the assistant town manager was hired up in Hamilton. So for a period of time, I didn't have the support of those two positions. Luckily, I hired Dave Rodriguez and Anna Friedman into those roles. Dave Rodriguez has since moved on to another position about six months ago. And Anna Friedman has stepped up and done essentially two roles of the three. You know, I've been doing my best, but Anna's taken on a lot. And I just want to ensure that everyone knows that I, the intent is not to add a position here. The intent was to shift money that had been previously budgeted for to give the town the planner that it seems like there was a high amount of interest in. So just wanted to make sure I am clear on that, that I am trying to consolidate things in-house to try to provide different services to the community that seem like they're pretty necessary. So I, I, it's the same as my initial budget presentation and similar to what the Tufts students had said as well. When you talk about money, right now, there are CDBG funding that is specifically COVID-related that Winthrop can't apply for because we aren't a mini entitlement community right now and we don't have the level of ability in-house to actually apply for some of that funding. So, you know, there's, there's money on the table right now amongst money from other years that could have been received by the community. So this, this doesn't mean that this position pays for itself, but it could free up some additional money for the town. So, you know, it could be something exciting, but I've tried to make my pitch on it and now this is kind of up to you all. Thank you.
Okay, what's the scenario, Jim, if we do not pass the amendment?
I think.
Wait a minute.
I think Barbara had a comment.
All right, go ahead, Tricia.
Oh, I think Barbara had a comment.
Yes, I, this is Counselor Plakat. I agree with Counselor Christopher. I think that the planner's role is important and could add a lot to the town. I'll let it go with that.
Council Plakat, can you turn your volume up a little bit?
I'm not sure I can.
You're louder now.
Give it a shot. I am, okay. All right. I agree with Counselor Christopher. I think that the planner's role is important and can add a lot to the town. So I'm going to just vote with him on this.
Okay, can I ask you, the Jim or Bob, when what the effect is if that amendment does not pass?
Well, the effect is it, it would eliminate the, the subsequent motion, which is to have the savings from the benefit line also with that. And it would, it would eliminate the transfer to the council reserve by twenty-seven thousand and change. Other than that, it's, it's, it's a choice of the council. You know, I think it's also important to realize with a lot of grants comes either matching grants or if you're doing a project, you're going to have to have the money and the capital to do it. And I think it's tough that we're in the, we're not in a position right now to be spending a lot of money. But I do think that it's something that had been wanted by previous councils and, and I think this council majority also want this. I think it's been a, a goal of Austin's and I think that's why we tried to step up and, and secure the position, but just try and through this crazy time where we have a lot of positions. One of the things I was going to use potentially for this money was to look at somebody in inspectional services that we really need, that does bring in money and that is extremely much needed in this COVID time. But we were not trying to eliminate the position, we were trying to just hold off another quarter and, you know, have a small potential savings and still guarantee that that position is there for fiscal twenty-two.
Okay, I know that we've been looking for a planner for quite some time and I, I don't know if this is the time to do it and hire someone new, but I know we have been looking for a planner for quite some time. And I want to thank Anna Friedman because Anna not only is putting together this budget and doing the CFO work, but she's also been doing the grants and filling out the CARES Act grant money and trying to seek that money for us as well. So, I mean, I, I know that she's been burdened, but is, has been doing that job of getting the grants or trying to put it together while she's doing these other work as well. Okay, I, I just. Any other councils?
Hearing none.
Yeah, oh, council president, just, I'd like to just add on, echo some of the comments that have been made before. May I also just like to make a pitch for the six months of a planner and not the three months? I can also respectfully disagree with the, the committee on this one. There seems to sometimes be a logjam, I think, in town government when it comes to long-term planning and, and some of like our, our current standing boards, the planning board, the appeals board. I think, I would hope that this person that we bring in can kind of work as a conduit between those two boards and, and the folks here in the community and on the council. So just wanted to add my voice in as in favor for the six months of the planner.
Okay, any other discussion? All right, let's put this to a vote. The amendment is to reduce the grant office from forty-seven thousand five hundred to twenty-three thousand seven hundred and fifty. All those in favor of that reduction in the amendment signify by saying aye in a roll call.
Councilor Jero.
No.
Council Plakat.
No, no.
Council, Council DeMarco.
No.
Council Christopher.
No.
Council Honan.
No.
Council Frino.
No.
Council LaCanti.
No.
Vice President Leteri.
Yes.
President Boncory.
I am voting yes because I depend on this citizens' finance committee to give me recommendations and this is one of the recommendations they made and I have to support that. I vote yes.
The amendment did not pass.
The amendment does not pass.
So this eliminates the following amendment, so I will now make an amendment from the finance commission, make an amendment to increase the town council reserve line five seven eight one zero zero from one hundred thousand to one hundred and twenty thousand, which is basically.
Ten thousand, we saved.
Yeah, putting the money in a placeholder for now.
Okay. So the motion is to amend the budget by increasing the town council reserve by the twenty thousand dollars that we took from the DPW gas and from the gas line, from the gas line and the maintenance line, we took ten each and, and this is, this motion is putting it into the town council reserve. Is that correct, council?
That's correct.
Okay. Any discussion on that? Hearing none, please take a roll call.
Councilor Jero.
Yes.
Council Plakat.
Yes.
Council DeMarco.
Yes.
Council Christopher.
Yes.
Council Honan.
Yes.
Council Frino.
Yes.
Council LaCanti.
Yes.
Vice President Leteri.
Yes.
President Boncory.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion passes unanimously and now there. Any other amendments to the budget?
The finance commission has one other, I guess it's an amendment, it's not technically to the operating budget, so I guess we'd save it for capital. So I guess, yeah, it's not part of this budget, so we can hold on to the capital. I do have a few other motions that, one thing that we haven't talked about at all and anybody's discussion about the budget has been the schools. The schools did ask for a, a level service budget, which was one point five million dollars, which is level serviced over last year. They have been allotted eight hundred thousand and even when Austin and Anna revised the budget down, that number was kept at eight hundred, so I, I thank them and I'm sure the councils thank them for keeping them, you know, not whole, but as close as they possibly could. That eighty, that eight hundred thousand does account for a, a large percentage of the available cash from the, from fiscal, for fiscal twenty-one. However, having said that, and as, and as good as it seems to be, it's still almost fifty percent less than what they need to be level serviced. The schools are in a position where, you know, everybody's extremely tight right now, we all know that. The schools are in a position where, you know, not fortunately, but they're losing eight individuals between either performance issues or retirement or just people moving on. Six of those positions are mandated to be, you know, a lot of them include Fed that are mandated by the state. They do not have the funds now to make any of those hires. I don't think they will be having layoffs, but I think there are positions that will not be rehired, which would, which would increase class sizes in a time where, I, I mean, we don't even know what's going on with the schools. We do know that the schools were able to cut that differential from one point five down. A lot of that was from the SBAC who was able to purchase a lot of IT equipment that helped reduce expenses that the school would have had to incur in twenty-one. Also, the SBAC was able to purchase a couple of vehicles that will hopefully help reduce their transportation cost in twenty-one. And the state has come up with some guidelines that enable them to, to, to maintain some of the savings that they might have incurred this past quarter, to enable them to buy ahead, to prepay basically for expla, for supplies and expenses for next year. So that was able to afford that savings. There still seems to be a two hundred thousand dollar gap, which I, I would like to try my very best to, to approach in some way, shape or form. So I have the following motions that do not add up to anywhere near where I wanted them to, but they add up to a hundred and ten thousand dollars. And I also want to later discuss inspectional services, which, you know, one thing that the finance commission did was we were extremely cognizant of the fact that the health department needed help and that inspectional services needed help. We were led to believe that we would not want to hire anybody for those, either of those positions because it would eliminate our ability to use COVID money for that. It seems that somehow, some way, they have been able to hire. It, it looks like there might be a hire for the health department. I still have not seen anything for inspectional services, so I will ask them, Austin and Anna after, if that's something that we should be wary about or something that they feel that they'll find a source. But I will make these motions for the schools. The first motion would be to decrease, well.
Do we have these in writing?
I do. Oh, do you? No, you don't. These are motions brought up by counselor at the budget, which are acceptable.
Go ahead.
So the first motion is to decrease the town council reserve from a hundred and twenty thousand to seventy-five thousand and to increase the school appropriation by forty-five thousand. And that would be the first motion.
All right. Start it again. Town council reserve.
I have to, I have to just do my math over, but it was to. It is to decrease the town council reserve from one hundred and twenty thousand to seventy-five thousand or a forty-five thousand dollar reduction and increase the school appropriation to twenty-two million one seventy-seven, seven hundred and fifty dollars or a forty-five thousand dollar increase. So it's ba, just a synopsis, that is basically taking the twenty thousand in savings that we just felt, found, that we just accumulated through the motions by the finance commission and adding twenty-five thousand of the council reserve.
And that'll leave the council reserve at seventy-five thousand for the whole year?
It will. It's been at a hundred most of the year. It will. It's been at a hundred most of the years that we've had it. And it's and I'm not saying it hasn't been used, but a lot of things that we're trying to do with the budget is to it's been used predominantly to, to fund items that aren't funded in the budget, that we requested to be funded in the budget. For example, pest control, derelict properties and such. But I feel that pest control should be lessened this year because the CBD should be paying for a lot of the issues that will arise down the center. And hopefully, we might be able to get some COVID relief money to help us with pest control with issues that have arisen from from the, you know, in relation to the coronavirus.
Okay. Are you gonna make a bunch of motions to get to a certain figure you're giving?
It all depends how this goes. Because, yes, I'm making motions to try to get to what now will only, will be a hundred and ten thousand dollars.
Okay, and this is the first forty-five thousand, but, all right. This, is this coming from committee or is this coming from you?
This is coming from Counselor Littieri.
Okay. Is there a second to the motion?
I second it.
Motion's been made and seconded by Counselor Littieri, seconded by Counselor DiMarco to decrease the Town Council Reserve account from a hundred thousand dollars from a hundred and twenty thousand dollars to seventy-five thousand dollars and to give that forty-five thousand dollars is an increase to the school budget. All right, is there any discussion? Counselor Christopher, let's see, get your hand up.
Jim, Counselor Littieri, I just wanted to see, I think it might be helpful for everybody if we could maybe see what all, all of what you were planning to
Sure, I, I mean, I could tell you very quickly. It would be taking twenty-five thousand from employee benefits school line, twenty-two thou, twenty thousand from employee benefits town line and twenty thousand from employee benefits retiree line. And if we look at motions that have come before us tonight, it seems like in every year there is money, you know, not ample, but there is sufficient money in those funds. Because even in the year we're in, there seems to be a good chunk of money that they're going to use for year-end transfers. So I do believe that those are warranted. Every year we've been here, they've been warranted and I think they continue to be warranted. So that would it would be, and again, it's not what I think is needed, but I think it would hopefully help to reduce, maintain class size what they are. That would be twenty, twenty, twenty-five and then forty-five from the, so three group insurance lines and forty-five from the council.
Which would be a hundred and twenty thousand dollars.
I think it should be one-ten, twenty, forty, sixty-five and forty-five, one-ten.
Oh, I thought you said twenty-five, twenty-five and twenty from
No, I, I, I don't, I don't feel as comfortable with the town and the retiree to take the twenty-five, so I thought twenty-five, twenty and twenty. And it would be school, town and retiree. Correct.
Okay, so schools twenty-five, town and retirees at twenty each.
Correct.
So that is sixty-five and forty-five. So that'd be a hundred and ten thousand. Okay, do you know what's left in those accounts if you take that money?
Yes, what's left in the, and again, it's, it's, it seems like a lot of money, it goes, but what's left in the school, in the school insurance line would be twenty two million seven twenty-one. Well. What's left in the town and the school line would be two million seven hundred twenty-one thousand seven fifty-one seventy-eight. So that's two million seven two one seven five one point seven eight. What's left in the town line, that would be the schools, in the town, it would be one million six hundred thirty-eight thousand two eighty-five. And the retiree line would be one million six hundred thirty-eight thousand two eighty-five. Also, that doesn't seem possible.
You're both identical?
No, they can't be.
Hannah, do you have the number?
I'm sorry.
He's looking at the retirees.
I have it right here. Two oh seven four eight seven three. Two oh seven four. Two oh seven four eight seven three minus twenty. This, the retiree line would be two million fifty-four thousand eight seventy-three.
Okay. So the lowest one would be the town, which still be
Which is the least amount of employees, correct.
All right, everybody, hear what's coming for. Go ahead, Jim.
No, I was just saying the budgeted amount for last year's fiscal twenty budget was for the town, one point six oh one. So it's slightly above that, but there's obviously, like everything else, there's an increase to cost. So, and, and, and I, well, I don't feel, I know it was I know we were sufficient last year because there's motions coming before us to take money from their, the public accounts for the you know, I, I always feel comfortable that there's slight room in this line. I, I, I I also feel pretty confident that, you know, a lot of this generates some free cash, which is also a good thing, but I just feel in this time we need to, to cut this a little closer.
Hannah, what, what do you have to say?
So one thing that the Town Council should consider when evaluating this motion is that the, the GIC Employee Benefits Line, we traditionally do provide a little bit of a buffer there because we do not fully fund our snow and ice obligation in the budget. A lot of cities and towns do this because once you increase your snow and ice appropriation, you can never lower that again. So this year we have, we have some funds left over. Part of that is because we had a highly unusual low snow and ice year. So to the extent that we have a more regular year for snow and ice, the budget that has already been provided by the Town Manager is actually a bit aggressive in funding the GIC costs. One other thing to note, which is a little bit complicated, is that we have been receiving credits from the GIC for the past few years due to a Medicaid, a Medicare Part D refund from the FED that's been passed on to us through GIC. I believe we had at least fifty thousand dollars in credits this year. So part of our the turnbacks that we've been seeing in that line have been because of these refunds we've been receiving and we are no longer receiving those refunds going into next year. So more of that wiggle room that we had has now been eliminated. And I will just tell you, if anyone wants to do the math really quick, we spend about six hundred thousand dollars a month right now on our GIC bill in total for all three of those lines. We spent, the town is responsible for eighty-five, about eighty-five percent of that. GIC costs are going up between three and seven percent. So I assumed about a four and a half percent growth amount for that, those accounts. And then assuming that some of those funds will be to then be applied based on historicals to our snow and ice accounts. So I, in my, I kept, when we, when we evaluated a reduction for the Town Manager's budget, we did not go here to take reductions because we had already been somewhat aggressive here separately. We weren't sure if we'd be seeing folks that may have been laid off. If their partners, spouses worked for the town, you need to come onto town insurance in light of other, losing their insurance potentially with their employment. So we've been treading very carefully with the GIC account. So I would just, I would caution adjustments here, understanding the the priorities that Counselor Littieri has put on the table.
Austin, do you want to weigh in on this?
No, I think Anna covered it.
Okay.
I will say, Council President, that they did make an adjustment on the school group insurance when they did the budget and cut it by fifteen thousand dollars. And I don't know since when that we're putting in numbers for group insurance that have an effect on snow and ice. I don't think we budget snow and ice based on group insurance.
Okay, any other comments, any other questions on this? Anyone on the council? All right, the only motion before us right now is the
Is the forty-five thousand.
Is the forty-five thousand dollars decreasing the Town Council Reserve Fund from one twenty to seventy-five thousand. That motion's been made by Counselor Littieri, seconded by Counselor DiMarco. Is there any further questions or discussions on it? Hearing none, then we'll take, oh, the motion is to deep fund for, for, most simply, take forty-five thousand dollars from the Town Council Reserve and put it into the school budget. Take the roll call, please.
Counselor Ruggiero.
Yes.
Counselor Flacott?
Yes.
Counselor DiMarco?
Yes.
Counselor Christopher?
Yes.
Counselor Honan?
Yes.
Counselor Farino?
Yes.
Counselor La
Yes.
Conti? Vice President Littieri?
Yes.
President Boncory?
Yes, that's unanimous. Motion passes unanimously. Okay, do you have other motions now?
I have those three we talked about. I have those three we talked about. And just to go back for a second on on Dick Kingston's report, one of the items he stated, and what I really wanted to do with this and the one thing I applaud, well, not one thing, but one of the things I applaud Austin and Anna for is for, I think they were I don't think, I don't think they ever, ever would want to take seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars out of stabilization accounts to fund an operating budget. And I know that must have been extremely difficult for them. And, and, and I agree with that, that we should limit that as best we can. It helps us in bond ratings, it helps us in a number of ways. Our stabilization accounts have gone from a little over six million to roughly a little over four million and, which is only a six percent of the operating budget, six point one seven percent. And ideally, to maintain really good bond ratings, you want to get as close to ten percent as you can or over. And, and I, and I know that was very difficult for them, but I don't really think they had a choice. But I don't want to, you know, the easy thing is to just say, hey, let's just take it out of stabilization and and I really don't want to do that because I don't think that that's the prudent thing to do. But, you know, the other thing I did want to look at, and, and I'm not going to make motion, I don't think, for it is because, you know, in Dick Kingston's report, he did say he picked two communities, which Council President discussed. And he talked about what they, what they're taking in reductions and one was seven percent and one was ten percent. We're taking fourteen percent. So I think we've been very I don't want to say aggressive, overly conservative in our estimates, particularly, particularly in excise tax. I, I think this time we're in is extremely different than two thousand eight and two thousand nine. I do think our excise tax is going to come in higher than anticipated. And I did want to change that number, but I'm not going to make a motion to do that. Even though Dick Kingston in his letter does say that the council does have the ability to adjust those numbers throughout the year. But I will just continue on the motions that I told Pete and I thank Pete for having me just get that on the table all at once. But my next motion would be to
Do you want to do the three of them together?
Yes, sure. There's a motion to decrease Employee Benefits Group Insurance Line five one seven five two zero from two million seven hundred forty-one thousand seven hundred fifty-one to two million seven hundred twenty-one thousand seven hundred a twenty-five thousand dollar reduction. And increase the school appropriation by the same amount. A motion to decrease Employee Benefits Group Insurance for the Town Line Item five one seven five one zero from one point six three two five, two eight five to one point six three eight six three eight two eight five, a twenty, uh six three three two eight five, a twenty thousand dollar reduction. And a motion to decrease Employee Benefits Group Insurance Retirees Line Item five one seven five hundred from one point six five three two eight five to one six three three. Reduce that line twenty thousand dollars. Two point oh seven four eight seven three to two point oh five four eight seven three. And increase the school budget by that sixty-five thousand dollars.
Okay, is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Seconded? Counselor Farino. Okay, motions have been made by Counselor Littieri, seconded by Counselor Farino to take twenty-five thousand dollars from the Employees Benefits Fund twenty thousand from the Town Benefits Fund and twenty thousand from the retirees' benefits fund for a total of sixty-five thousand dollars and to add that to the school budget. Everybody understand that? Is there any comments on it? Any discussion on it? Hearing none, we'll put it to a vote.
Counselor Ruggiero?
Yes.
Counselor Flacott?
Yes.
Counselor DiMarco?
Yes.
Counselor Christopher?
Yes.
Counselor Honan?
No.
Counselor Farino?
Yes.
Counselor LaConti?
No.
Vice President Littieri?
Yes.
President Boncory?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion passes.
I thank the councilors, and I know the school thanks you. I, I do just ask if, if Austin or Anna, probably Anna, if you could just comment on the, on the inspectional services line. Do we think there might be COVID money to help them out with? And that's not a new employee. That would be increasing somebody from part-time to full-time?
Yes. Thank you. Yeah, the, the, sorry, the plan there is to use CARES Act money. We think of the drastic increase in the frequency that they're going to have to visit some of our business establishments in town is directly associated with COVID nineteen. So we do believe that CARES Act money would be the proper funding source for that. And that's also similar to what we're looking at for the Health Department as well. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So.
All right, now, these are the only amendments. Any councilor have any other amendments to the budget? Any councilor want to bring forward any other amendments? All right, hearing none, then we will vote on the budget as amended with Hannah, go ahead.
Just one question. The Town Manager had submitted an adjusted amendment, and I apologize if I missed, if the councilor took this up regarding some funding for the Health Department that would round out the CARES Act funding. I'm not sure if that's been taken up yet.
Let me, okay, yeah, I do have a motion to transfer transfer thirty-seven thousand five hundred dollars from account zero one two nine zero five six dash five six nine five hundred Regional Dispatch to account zero one five one zero five one, five one 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 zero zero Health Department Permanent Employees for a new position to be included in the Health Department and adjustment through the Health Department Director's Salary. And that money is coming from various sources and so that would enable us to hire a, my understanding is that will enable us to hire a new person for merit and to have an adjustment in that salary. Is that correct? And we feel comfortable with this, with the CARES money, that it's not a funded position in the budget?
Yeah, because these, this funding would be only for the final six months of the year for the position. So the first six months of the year would be funded with CARES Act money. And also, there are some funds from a public health grant that the Public Health Director believes we can allocate to offset some of the costs to the town. But in order for us to post this position immediately and get the Health Department the staffing levels that it needs to during the COVID nineteen crisis, we're recommending this particular approach. We received an update regarding our assessment for the Regional Dispatch that we believe will allow us to move these funds to get that position up and running for the full year.
Okay, so is this a budget amendment or is this money that we're just transferring now?
The, the money, it's a, it's a budget amendment in terms of the, the funds from the Regional Dispatch would need to be moved during this budget process over or, or we could come back to the council in the middle of the year to move those funds. But wanted to make sure that, that we could actually go ahead and post this position and make that adjustment for the director and without the full appropriation. Technically, those are things that we would be spending above and beyond the appropriation. um, and without the full appropriation, technically, those are things that we would be spending, uh, above and beyond the appropriation, which is not something that we should be doing.
Okay.
So now, the prudent time to do that.
There is a motion being made by Council Vice President Luteri, again, to approve the transfer of thirty-seven-thousand-five-hundred from the regional dispatch line in the budget to the health department permanent employees in the budget. Is that correct?
Correct.
Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second the motion.
Council Farino seconds the motion. Any discussion?
The only question I have for Anna or Austin, is this a, um, it's not a contracted position, it's a permanent position that would be in the budget for fiscal twenty-two, and we're responsible for the medical and all that, it's a full-time position?
Correct.
Okay, any other discussion on it? Okay. All those in favor of transferring thirty-seven-thousand-five-hundred from regional dispatch to the health department? Uh, vote yes on this, um, roll call.
Councilor Jero.
Yes.
Council Placot?
Yes.
Council DeMarco.
Yes.
Council Christopher?
Yes.
Council Honan?
Yes.
Council Farino?
Yes.
Council LaCanty?
Yes.
Vice President Luteri?
Yes.
President Boncory?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Are there any other amendments to the budget before we vote on the budget as amended? Now, all the amendments have been made. Anybody have any other amendments? Either the town manager, the CFO, or any councilor. Hearing none, I will take a motion to vote on the fiscal year twenty-twenty-one budget as amended.
Second.
Roll call?
Yes, roll call Denise, please.
Councilor Jero.
Yes.
Council Placot?
Yes.
Council DeMarco.
Yes.
Council Christopher?
Yes.
Council Honan?
Yes.
Council Farino?
Yes.
Council LaCanty?
Yes.
Vice President Luteri?
Yes.
President Boncory?
Yes.
Budget passes.
Budget is passed. Thank you very much for all your work on the budget. Uh, Austin, Anna, Jim, and the Venians Commission, Bob Wynn, thank you very much for being here on the line as well, and to all the councilors, thank you so much. We have a budget for fiscal year twenty-one.
Uh, Council President, we have several other motions, just pretty quick ones for enterprise funds.
Uh, first motion. Wait a minute, I think, uh, those are back under new business, down under new business fourteen, fifteen-C, we're still under old business. Even though I know they affect the budget, it, it, their new business, we're going to have to vote for them as that. All right, the next item on the agenda is town council voting for a parking pilot program for residents' tickets on Point Shirley. All right, the, uh, maker of that motion was Council.
Just, just point of order, um, I think you should maybe go back to Vice President Luteri concerning, um, I think you should vote for all of the items with the budget together, um, just for the sake of clarity in your minutes and things like that. Um, the way it is on the agenda, you have like budget, and then you kind of have other items of the budget in new business. I think you should hit over all of the budget items, um, at once, just to have, uh, consistent voting and, uh, consistent kind of thought process throughout.
Yeah, I see that's how the, uh, the, the agenda came through to everyone. All right, we'll, we'll, uh, tentatively motion to, uh, move the items on the agenda. Motion to, uh, someone make a motion to move the items on the agenda?
I'll make that motion.
All right, is there a second?
A second.
Okay, all those in favor of taking, uh, items, uh, fourteen-C through, uh, the end of the items on the budget, uh, now, we signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Take a roll call, I'm sorry. We have to have a roll call of everything.
Councilor Jero.
Yes.
Council Placot?
Yes.
Council DeMarco?
Yes.
Council Christopher?
Yes.
Council Honan?
Yes.
Council Farino?
Yes.
Council LaCanty?
Yes.
Vice President Luteri?
Uh, yes.
President Boncory?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, Councilor Luteri.
Okay, these might not be...
Where are you starting on the, uh?
I'm starting by the list I have in front of me, so I'm not really looking at the, at the, um, at the, at the agenda. So the first motion is pursuant to Mass General Laws, Chapter forty-four, Section thirty-two, and in accordance with the Charter of the Town of Winter, I moved that the town council authorize the continuation of all revolving funds in accordance with Mass General Laws, Chapter forty-four, Section fifty-three E and a half. And, uh, Anna, can you just explain that, just? Just continuation of...
My, sorry, my sound went out for a moment there, could you say that one more time?
Just the continuation of all the revolving accounts?
Yep, so technically, uh, that's just to continue the authorization for the ceiling for the revolving accounts that the town has for, um, tax titles, um, the, um, uh, the, uh, the Pauline Street for the rentals of the gym and the old middle school, and the council in Eugene has a revolving, a revolving fund as well. These are funds that are set up consistent with statute, um, that allow for funds that, um, operate, uh, where, um, we're making expenditures and the money's coming in sort of after to sort of pay for themselves, to pay for those, but there's sometimes a little bit of a timing component to when the money's eventually come back in. Um, they're technically not appropriated, but this, so this motion just allows for those to continue to be authorized for the next full year.
Is there a second? Okay, hold on a second.
All right, a motion has been made for the adoption of the annual revolving funds budgets for fiscal year twenty-twenty-one. Uh, it was submitted by, uh, town manager, and it's been made and seconded here. Any discussion on the issue? Hearing none, let's take a roll call.
Councilor Jero.
Yes.
Council Placot?
Yes.
Council DeMarco?
Yes.
Council Christopher?
Yes.
Council Honan?
Yes.
Council Farino?
Yes.
Council LaCanty?
Yes.
Vice President Luteri?
Yes.
President Boncory?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, now we'll start at the top of page two there, and the motion that I moved at the town council vote to transfer fifty-five-thousand dollars from capital stabilization to, to a general fund entitled fiscal twenty-one library roof for the replacement of the roof at the high building at the library, and any addition and, uh, incidental or related cost there too.
Second.
All right, again, this is, uh, from the town manager, and the motion is that the town council vote to transfer fifty-five-thousand of capital stabilization to a general fund accounted library roof. All right, uh, fifty-five-thousand-dollar expense, any discussion on the issue?
This is an item that Austin had had and hoped to have done on last year's budget, but it, it, it didn't get done for a variety of reasons. Um, so I know he's hopeful, as, as are we all, that this can get done this year.
Hearing no other discussion, all those in favor, answer yes on the roll call.
Councilor Jero.
Yes.
Council Placot?
Yes.
Council DeMarco?
Yes.
Council Christopher?
Yes.
Council Honan?
Yes.
Council Farino?
Yes.
Council LaCanty?
Yes.
Vice President Luteri?
Yes.
President Boncory?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, the next one?
I move that the town council vote to transfer thirty-eight-thousand-five-hundred dollars from the capital stabilization fund to the, uh, to a general fund account entitled fiscal twenty-one William P. Gorman School Water Heater for the replacement of a hot water heater at the William P. Gorman Fort Banks Elementary School, and any incidental or related cost there too.
Second.
Okay, is there a second? Motion's been made and seconded, and it's a motion by, uh, Council, uh, Luteri, seconded by Council Farino, and submitted by town manager, that we spend, uh, thirty-eight-thousand-five-hundred dollars by transferring it from the capital stabilization fund to a fiscal year twenty-one, uh, W. P. Gorman School Water Heat Replacement. All those in favor, any more discussion on it? Not all those in favor, say aye during the roll call.
Councilor Jero.
Yes.
Council Placot?
Yes.
Council DeMarco?
Yes.
Council Christopher?
Yes.
Council Honan?
Yes.
Council Farino?
Yes.
Council LaCanty?
Yes.
Vice President Luteri?
Yes.
President Boncory?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Council President, I move that the town council vote to appropriate the following sums for the operation of the water and sewer enterprise fund budget for the fiscal year twenty-twenty-one. Personnel and benefit costs, one-point-five-three-eight-million-three-hundred-seventy-one. Operation and maintenance, eight-point-seven-nine-seven-million-zero-four-four, for a total of ten-million-three-thirty-five-four-fifteen. And as funding therefore, that the town vote to raise the ten-million-three-hundred-thirty-five-thousand, um, four-hundred-and-fifteen dollars as follows, and it is from user fees.
Okay, second. Motion's been made and seconded to adopt the water and sewer enterprise fund budget in the amount of ten-thousand-three-hundred-and-thirty-five-dollar, ten-million-three-hundred-and-thirty-five-thousand-four-hundred-and-fifteen dollars, and to raise those funds by user fees. All right? Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye on the roll call.
Councilor Jero.
Yes.
Council Placot?
Yes.
Council DeMarco?
Yes.
Council Christopher?
Yes.
Council Honan?
Yes.
Council Farino?
Yes.
Council LaCanty?
No.
Vice President Luteri?
Yes.
President Boncory?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Motion passes.
Council President, I move that the town council vote to appropriate the following sums for the operation of the Harbor Master Enterprise Fund budget for the fiscal year twenty-twenty-one. Personnel and benefit costs, one-hundred-eighty-four-thousand-nine-nineteen. Operation and maintenance, one-hundred-seventy-seven-thousand-four-forty-seven, for a total of three-hundred-sixty-two-thousand-three-sixty-six. And as the funding therefore, that the town vote to raise, the three-hundred-sixty-two-thousand-three-sixty-six through user fees.
There's a second.
Second.
Motion's been made by Council Terry, seconded by Council Farino, for the adoption of the Harbor Master Enterprise Fund Budget for fiscal year twenty-twenty-one in a total amount of three-hundred-and-sixty-two-thousand-three-hundred-and-sixty-six dollars, and to fund that by raising, uh, the same amount in user fees. Any discussion, any comments? Hearing none, take a roll call, please.
Councilor Jero.
Yes.
Council Placot?
Yes.
Council DeMarco?
Yes.
Council Christopher?
Yes.
Council Honan?
Yes.
Council Farino?
Yes.
Council LaCanty?
Yes.
Vice President Luteri?
Yes.
President Boncory?
Yes, motion carries unanimously.
Council President, I move that the town council vote to appropriate the following sums for the operation of the Ferry Enterprise Fund Budget for fiscal year twenty-twenty-one. Personnel and benefit costs, two-hundred-seven-thousand-ninety-six dollars. Operation and maintenance, two-fifty-two-nine-oh-four, for a total of four-hundred-and-sixty-thousand. And as funding therefore, the town vote to raise the four-hundred-and-sixty-thousand through user fees of one-hundred-and-forty-nine-thousand, and grants and state aid of three-hundred-and-eleven-thousand.
Second.
Motion's been made and by Council Terry, seconded by Council Farino, for the adoption of the Ferry Enterprise Fund Budget for fiscal year twenty-twenty-one for a total amount of four-hundred-and-sixty-thousand dollars. And, uh, as funding for that four-hundred-and-sixty-thousand dollars, it'd be a, a raise of user fees for one-hundred-and-forty-nine-thousand, and grants and state aid for three-hundred-and-eleven-thousand. Any discussion, any comments? Hearing none, please take a roll call vote. Yes, vote to adopt.
Councilor Jero?
Yes.
Council Placot?
Yes.
Council DeMarco?
Yes.
Council Christopher?
Yes.
Council Honan?
Yes.
Council Farino?
Yes.
Council LaCanty?
Yes.
Vice, Vice President Luteri?
Yes.
President Boncory?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Council President, I move that the town council vote to appropriate the following sums for the operation of the Recreation Enterprise Fund Budget for fiscal year twenty-twenty-one. Personnel and benefits, two-hundred-twenty-three-thousand-one-sixty-nine. Operation and maintenance, one-hundred-nineteen-thousand-seven-eighty-seven, for a total of three-hundred-and-forty-two-thousand-nine-fifty-six. And as funding therefore, that the town vote to raise, the three-hundred-and-forty-two-thousand-nine-fifty-six through user fees.
Second.
Motion's been made by Council Terry, seconded by Council Farino, for the adoption of Recreation Enterprise Fund Budget for a total of three-hundred-and-forty-two-thousand-nine-hundred-and-fifty-six dollars, uh, which will be raised by user fees of the same amount. Any discussion, any comments? Hearing none, please take a roll call vote, or yes vote means you will adopt it.
Councilor Jero.
Yes.
Council Placot?
Yes.
Council DeMarco?
Yes.
Council Christopher?
Yes.
Council Honan?
Yes.
Council Farino?
Yes.
Council LaCanty?
Yes.
Vice President Luteri?
Yes.
President Boncory?
Yes, motion carries unanimously.
Council President, I move that the town council vote to appropriate the following sums for the operation of the Rink Enterprises Fund Budget for fiscal year twenty-twenty-one. Personnel and benefits, one-hundred-twenty-five-thousand-three-forty-one. Operation and maintenance, one-hundred-ninety-eight-thousand-one-twenty-five, for a total of three-hundred-and-twenty-three-thousand-four-sixty-six. And as funding there, therefore, that the town vote to raise the three-hundred-and-twenty-three-thousand-four-sixty-six through user fees.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made by Council Terry, seconded by Council Farino, for the adoption of the last in Rink Enterprise Fund Budget in the amount of three-hundred-and-twenty-three-thousand-four-hundred-and-sixty-six dollars, and that the funds be raised by using user fees of that same amount, three-hundred-and-twenty-three-thousand-four-sixty-six. Is there any comment? Is there any questions? Hearing none, I put it to a vote. A yes vote means you will adopt the enterprise fund's budget. Please, uh, take a roll call.
Councilor Jero.
Yes.
Council Placot?
Yes.
Council DeMarco?
Yes.
Council Christopher?
Yes.
Council Honan?
Yes.
Council Farino?
Yes.
Council LaCanty?
Yes.
Vice President Luteri?
Yes.
President Boncory?
Yes.
Motion passes.
The last motion, Council President. I move that the town council vote to transfer fifty-thousand dollars from the building stabilization, maintenance stabilization fund to account zero-one-one-nine-two-five-two-dash-five-two-four-one-hundred, building maintenance, to fund the following priority preventative maintenance projects listed below, or take any other action relative there too. Five-thousand dollars for elevator piston packing repair at the ATC school. Ten thousand for replacement of bathroom faucets and toilets at the police department. Fifteen thousand for the frost building carpentry, um, at the library. Twelve thousand for replacement rubber stair treads, uh, in the main stairs at the ATC and other winter public schools. Four thousand for tree removal cleanup on council, at council and aging. Four thousand for removal of partially collapsed chimney at the fire department. That's it.
Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded by Council Terry, seconded by Council DeMarco for prevent, preventative maintenance priority projects in the amount of fifty-thousand dollars. Uh, and they are for the elevator at the ATC, uh, bathrooms of the police department, carpeting for the library, Carpentry for the library. Stair treads for the uh ATC Public School. Four thousand for tree removal at the Council and Aging and four thousand for removal of a chimney at the Fire Department. For a total of fifty thousand dollars, is there any discussion? Any comments? Hearing none, a yes vote will mean that we can move that fifty thousand dollars and do those repairs. All those in favor say yes in the roll call.
Council Jero.
Yes.
Council Pla Cart.
Yes.
Council DeMarco.
Yes.
Council Christopher.
Yes.
Council Honan.
Yes.
Council Farino.
Yes.
Council LaConti.
Yes.
Vice President Luteri.
Yes.
President Boncori.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion carries unanimously. I believe there is a you have another motion, uh Council Luteri?
There's a couple of other motions on the new business, I was just um
on the uh year-end budget transfers.
Yeah, now that would something, something that normally would go to Finance, Anna, is that something you need done tonight?
Um, the uh year-end transfers have to occur before uh uh July fifteenth, so um I believe as long as the Town Council were to take that up at its next meeting, if that were to occur before the fifteenth, then that should be okay. For us to close out the fiscal year.
Yeah, I think we'd like to send that to Finance, Council President.
Okay, then let's go back to the budget and go back to old business.
Okay. Council President.
Yes.
One other item that was touched on earlier in the meeting was uh the Fort Banks Access Road Study. Um I think it would be prudent um it just to confirm um the advice of the Finance Commission to vote on that matter. Um the the advice of the Finance Commission was to vote no on it, but um I think that you should, you all should have a recorded vote on the item.
Council President, that was a recommendation from the Finance Commission, which we didn't take up because it was more uncomfortable and not on the operating budget. But it was a motion as to one of the capital requests was to use fifty-six thousand five hundred dollars from capital stabilization to fund a uh a study at Fort Banks. We feel that there's been adequate information now to at least take a good look at it to see if there's any additional funds needed. And again, we were trying to limit whatever we possibly could as to what we were taking out of stabilization. So it did come out of Finance Commission with a recommendation to hold off.
Alright. So there's no action. But there's no actually taken of moving off.
Well, I think what Austin would like is just some uh some some vote of confidence from the Council that this is what we chose to do.
Well, also, it's it's something that was proposed in my budget. I like, I'm agnostic either way on it. It's the, it's something that was in the proposed budget. You all should vote one way or the other on it, just to clear the decks of it either way, type of thing.
Okay. Opening that role, the Fort Banks Access Road is one of the key issues of that I'd like to see get done this administration. And you had put fifty-six thousand dollars in the budget to do the testing uh the survey on that, is that correct? And now we're saying we found the that work and we don't really need to spend that fifty-six thousand on it. But we may need to spend something on it, is that correct?
Yes, so the s- the study was found from um after the school was built. Um it was a study that covered uh three different options of um access roads around that school. Um the one that was essentially highly favorable under it was um trying to find a solution through um the Governor's Park Development. Um so the study doesn't seem to be necessary. That said, um there there is going to be money necessary um to pursue this project in terms of um building a road, some type of um payment potentially, um those types of things. So there could be funding attached to pursuing this project as well. But the study of the project itself um doesn't seem like it's going to be necessary at this point in time. Um all that would be necessary would be a refresh by um a traffic engineer to update the numbers from ten years ago or eleven years ago, type of thing.
Okay, so does someone have a motion to remove that fifty-six thousand from the budget? Or to leave it in the budget?
I believe Anna has uh language for that.
Sorry, uh one second, I just lost all the there you are. Um so technically the, and I apologize, this is actually my fault, I had sent Denise the draft and not a final version of this motion and just realized that it wasn't on the agenda. Um we wanted to leave it up to Town Council to make the final decision on that. So the um if no action is taken, then there would not be a transfer from the Capital Stabilization Fund to the General Fund to support a special article for this. If some action um is desired at this time, um a recommended approach, which is the motion we had intended to file for Town Council's consideration, was for um thirty-nine thousand eight hundred twenty-nine dollars, which is the original request um in the Town Manager's original budget. Minus some funding that we've identified in old special article as we've been closing out the fiscal year uh that could be put toward the updates that Austin referenced. So to the extent that further funding is um of interest to support those next steps, um we had uh we we had intended to submit a motion for thirty-nine thousand eight hundred twenty-nine dollars for the Council to decide if that uh was a if those funds should be set aside at this point to support the next steps on that project. And that would be from the Capital Stabilization Fund, if the Council would like to 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 do that at this time.
Okay. So you feel a motion should be made to take thirty-nine thousand dollars from the stabilization fund and put it in a fund for?
For um FY twenty-one. Yep, um FY twenty-one Fort Banks Access Road up uh study updates.
Okay. Alright. Can we have that in the form of a motion? Okay, motion is been made by Council Pla Cart to put thirty-nine thousand dollars in stabilization fund for our studies on the access road from Fort Banks School. Is there a second to that?
Second.
Okay, motion has been made and seconded. Alright, to put thirty-nine thousand dollars from the stabilization fund into a fund entitled uh Fort Banks Access Road Fund. Alright, any discussion?
I just have a question.
Yeah. Go ahead, Rich.
Yeah. Anna, um uh where'd you come up with the thirty-nine thousand on Austin? Just curious.
Uh the thirty-nine thousand is uh the original number that was requested, which I believe is fifty-six five hundred. Let me just pull up um the budget. Uh one moment. Is uh fifty-six five hundred was the original study that had been requested based on information that Austin had obtained about how much it would potentially cost to do some updates at that point in time. Uh we think it is likely to be less than that based on the latest feedback that Austin just referenced. And we have identified approximately sixteen thousand dollars um in an old special article that was previously appropriated for looking at this issue, so that those funds are available. So the remaining funds of thirty-nine thousand would just be the variance between the money that we had found that's currently available with what the original request was. We are still, as Austin noted, we we do think it may end up being less than that. But we wanted to um because Austin's budget had touched on this and we understand it's a priority of the Council, wanted to put that amount of money uh on the table for the Council's consideration. Um should you want to step that aside for and um any relevant next steps based on what Austin just described for the next steps for the process.
Council President. Yes. Uh so basically, it looks like in some way, shape or form, you're still looking to spend the fifty-six thousand five hundred to do. Now, it can't be, I understand, and I think Austin explained that it's not just for a study, because the study was already done and nothing was ever done yet. Not to anybody's here's, you know, fault, but um nothing was done. I think it is a priority uh um of the Council to to try to get a clarification on this. I just think we should start with the studies, see where it takes us and what option we need to do and then come up with a plan. Um yeah, I I I know the Finance Commission was, is very lary about taking more money out of stabilization. I think it has to be done at some point. But I don't think there's a clear enough vision that we've gone over the study and decided on which plan we're gonna look at and then try to we seem to spend a lot of money on studies. This is the third study I think that's been done over the last, yes, eighteen years.
Right, I don't think another study is needed, but there is gonna be money needed for the planning on this and uh I know that Barbara Pla Cart's committee, Council Pla Cart's committee has already had one meeting uh with the people uh about the access road from Governor's Park. We're waiting for them to have their board to have a meeting on it. It's something that hopefully will be happening very soon and we are gonna need some money to to fund it one way or the other, so I think this one should be there.
I I I'm kind of of the opinion that we should try to wait to un- understand exactly what the next step is going to be with us before we make an appropriation. Um so I think right now, uh my instincts say to sort of keep it in stabilization until we know exactly what the next step is. Um I'm not against going forward with any of this, but it sounds to me like we're asking for the same appropriation that we 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 asked for three months ago before we didn't, before, when we didn't know we had this first study. Um so I'd like, I think, a little bit more details about what the next step is. Maybe if uh if it is just updating the numbers, I think that that could be reduced pretty um healthily, I I would expect. And I I I think we should probably have a better um idea of what the next steps are. I'm not against spending money to make this happen, I just think that we wanna be um ju- I just would like to know more about what the path forward is going to be before we appropriate money out of the stabilization fund.
Any other discussion? I believe the motion before us is to take thirty-nine thousand dollars out of the stabilization fund and put it into a fund that states that it is for the ATC, I mean the Fort Banks Access Road. Uh yes vote would mean we'd hold the thirty-nine thousand for that road. A no vote would mean that we do not. Alright, all those in favor, please say yes on a roll call.
Council Jero.
No.
Council Pla Cart.
Yes.
Council DeMarco.
Yes.
Council Christopher.
No.
Council Honan.
No.
Council Farino.
Yes.
Council LaConti.
No.
Vice President Luteri.
No.
President Boncori.
Yes.
The no's when it does not pass.
Okay, so the motion stays in the stabilization fund. Alright, um next issue, does anybody else have any financial motions under the budget? Hearing none, now can we approve the budget as amended? Motion's been made to approve the budget with all the amendments that have been passed. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Yes, on the roll call, I'm sorry.
Wait a minute, did did this vote already happen?
We already did this.
We already did what?
We already did the operating budget and then we went through each of the stable uh each of the um enterprise funds. So I don't think we have to do a a one in its totality, I think we did the operating budget separately and we did all the
Uh we just added other amendments.
Uh those were done, those were done via transfer uh Council President, so those are those are separate entities from the underlying appropriations.
I I understand this, this thirty-nine thousand that we just talked about, we do not is it, is it change in the budget, is it not? It's an amendment.
That was proposed, proposed out of capital money, it was not part of the operating budget. I think, correct, Anna or?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
Uh that that amount of money isn't in the bottom, it's not part of that bottom line to the initial motion that the Town Council approved for the operating budget. It's 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 a separate, um it's a separate con- actually, yeah, it's a separate, it's a separate item.
Okay. Alright, so we did pass the budget back under thirteen A and old business. Moving on. Uh Town Council vote for parking pilot program for resident stickers on Point Shirley and that was a motion by Council DeMarco, I believe.
Yep.
Right?
Yeah.
And is there a second on the motion?
Second.
Alright. Do you want to read your motion, Council DeMarco, or you want me to read it?
Uh you can read the motion.
Alright, a motion that the Town Council vote for a pilot program to require resident parking stickers down the point from the opening of the town landing from June nineteenth, twenty twenty through September seventh, twenty twenty. This motion would require anyone parking a vehicle down the point to either display a winter presidential parking pass or a visitor pass regardless of the time of day. This program addresses several issues. First, the parking around Euro Beach. As many Point residents say, that parking is extremely limited. It also addressed the residential parking from Gear Island that spills onto DAF's app. Finally, and most importantly, with COVID-nineteen cases continuing to decrease in the town, it will limit the amount of visitors during this pandemic. It follows the model of the townwide curfew limiting our options to social distance. Being a pilot program, this would expire on September seventh twenty twenty and community feedback will determine whether the program should be put in place on a more permanent basis. Is that your motion, Council DeMarco?
That is my motion.
And who had seconded it?
Nick.
Or it was I.
It was Council LaConti, alright. Discussion.
I think that this should be uh put off for another meeting because we've gotten so much feedback against it. I think we should look in.
Okay, a motion. Are you making that as a form of a motion?
Uh is that what I have to do yet?
Uh motion's been made by Council Pla Cart to table this till the next meeting.
Second act. A second act.
Seconded by Council Honan. Uh any discussion on the table, motion to table? There's no really discussion on the motion to table. So it's either yes or no, we could can't discuss a motion to table. Okay, uh all those in favor of table it, please say yes on the roll call.
Council Jero.
Yes.
Council Pla Cart.
Yes.
Council DeMarco.
Yes.
Council Christopher.
Yes.
Council Honan.
Yes.
Council Farino.
No.
Council LaConti.
No.
Vice President Luteri. President Boncori.
Yes.
The motion is tabled.
Motion is tabled till the next meeting. And I have what committee is this in right now?
It came out of public safety, uh Mister President. Um I w- I would advise that um I did get um some so I I do think Point residents overwhelmingly want this, um but with the amount of correspondence that we got uh recently on the other side of the issue, um I had an opportunity to talk to a lot of those people who wrote into the Council and I want to thank them for writing in and sharing that with me. Um you know, I don't think putting this off till the next Council meeting is is a bad thing because I think it I wanna, I wanna put a good motion in, I wanted, these people deserve a pilot program down there, they've been asking for this for years.
Okay, let's, let's put a good motion together, which and send us back to public safety to perform that motion. And uh let's not just call it the point, but describe the property that we.
Well, I would like, I would like.
I would also like public safety to look at the possibility of making a parking lot there at Euro Beach. And I've already talked to uh Steve Keller about it, and he's drawing up some plans. But I'd like that committee to also look at getting that parking lot done because there should be a parking lot where there's that dead land in front of Euro Beach.
President Boncory, I um, you know, th- we already looked at it from a public safety issue. I really would like to see the Transportation Advisory Committee take a look at it. Um, because one of their members actually wrote in in correspondence with some good amendment ideas that I think could, you know, bring more people from outside the point to to feel comfortable with this. So I would like them to take a look at it from an advisory standpoint.
I I would like you then to have a meeting of the Public Safety Committee and invite not just the Traffic Advisory Committee to it, but our also our own task committee.
Okay.
We have a Traffic Advisory Safety Committee and a Transportation Advisory Committee. Why don't you have both committees come to a public safety meeting?
Okay.
All right, Council Placat?
Yes, that's a good idea.
Okay, thank you. Next motion. Oh, it's a mooring permit revocation. We have uh, we had a hearing, and the issue before us is to whether or not to uh overrule uh Harbor Master Larry Powers' ruling uh on pulling the permit. So a yes vote would mean that we are overruling his uh permit pulling, and no vote means that uh the the permit revocation stands and Mr. Grace will have to take that mooring elsewhere. Okay, uh, any questions on it, any discussions? Everybody heard the hearing, you acted as judges on this. Councilor Christopher. Unmove yourself.
This is the first time um I've heard one of these types of situations where the council would effectively act as an adjudicative body, and I'm curious, I've I've never seen this before. How did, what rules are are we I I using here? This, this isn't town ordinance, is it?
Yes. I mean, it it's the Winter Rules, uh, and regulations for waterway use. And uh, and we got an opinion from KMP Law saying that it should be adjudicated this way. He's entitled to an appeal to the council, and the council would have the final say.
It just seems awkward if we're promulgating the rules to also be uh acting as the body that is, you know, uh, in for or acting as the court as well. Um, but if that's the way that it's written up, um, I guess that's what our role is.
Well, as rules and ordinance committee chairman, you can change that down the road. But right now, this is the way it goes.
I just have one comment, and I just feel in uh, not to any, uh, this uh Chief Powers, but I felt that he uh wasn't properly represented. Uh, I don't think he uh really understood the ramifications of what was going on. So uh, I mean, that's my opinion. Um, you, you know, I, I, you know, I I don't think he realized, you know, what was in in uh other than the fact that he couldn't tie up, but it just didn't seem like he had a real comprehension of the situation. That's all.
Yeah.
I think he had a right to bring an attorney if he wanted to do the hearing, and I, I think Denise informed him of that, but I don't think uh.
Okay.
He wanted to. And uh, town, just right from Mike Caluso, who's right on it, said the the town ordinance that covers this, uh, because he's the hearing officer and it shows that the town council uh ordinance twelve point thirty two point zero eight zero C puts the appeal from this kind of thing to the council. So the issue again is, should we overturn uh Harbor Master Powers' revocation?
Uh, President?
Yes.
I would make a motion that we uphold the revocation of uh the Harbor Master.
Okay, motion been made to uphold the revocation. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion been made by Council Terry, seconded by Council Honan, that we uphold count uh Harbor Master's decision. All those in favor, say yes in the roll call.
Council Jero.
Yes.
Council Placat.
Yes.
Council DeMarco.
Yes.
Council Christopher.
Yes.
Council Honan.
Yes.
Council Farino.
Yes.
Council LaConti.
Yes.
Vice President Latieri.
Yes.
President Boncory.
Yes.
Revocation is upheld.
Okay, revocation is upheld unanimously, it passes. Uh, okay. Next thing before us is senior tax work off program. And I believe someone has a motion in that.
Council President?
Yes.
Uh, I make a motion that the town of Winter suspend the senior tax work off program for fiscal twenty one.
Second.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded to uh cancel the senior work off program for fiscal year twenty and twenty one, is that correct?
Let's go twenty one.
Twenty one.
Twenty one, okay.
Council Jero.
Discussion. Any discussion, hearing none? All right, we'll take a roll call vote.
Council Jero.
Yes.
Council Placat.
Yes.
Council DeMarco.
Yes.
Council Christopher.
Yes.
Council Honan.
Yes.
Council Farino.
Yes.
Council LaConti.
Yes.
Vice President Latieri.
Yes.
President Boncory.
Yes.
All right, the motion passes to suspend.
Okay. Uh. Uh, well, the outside season ordinance, we'll just put that off. Take that off the agenda for now, Councilor Christopher?
Yes, we don't uh, I plan on meeting on this in the future, but I don't have anything on the committee right now.
All right, under polling locations, do we ha- I think we're gonna put that over too.
I think we should have um the town clerk and maybe at our next meeting to talk a little bit about this and the, with the new guidelines from the state, we're gonna have to go over some stuff.
Okay, a motion to continue this till the next uh meeting under old business, that, that what you're looking for?
Thank you.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor of keeping that on the agenda at old business, signify by saying aye during the roll call.
Council Jero.
Yes.
Council Placat.
Yes.
Council DeMarco.
Yes.
Council Christopher.
Yes.
Council Honan.
Yes.
Council Farino.
Yes.
Council LaConti.
No.
Vice President Latieri.
Yes.
President Boncory.
Yes.
And Council President, if we could just adjust that um from polling locations to polling locations slash new voting regulations, so we could involve the town clerk.
Yes, we could put that. Okay.
Yep.
All right, motion carries, put that over to the next meeting. Uh, and the new business, we have two contracts to approve. Contract with uh for actuarial services and a contract for um Pitney Bowes's tear machine. Are those emergency motions that need to be done before the next meeting in, first meeting in July? Are they both, does it have to be done?
Um, it's possible if the town council could take them up tonight. We need to sign contracts before the beginning of the next fiscal year. Um, and it would be ideal if we could uh get those in place so we don't um miss a chance to to sign on for those contracts.
Okay, so the contracts have to be signed before July first, would, would we're not gonna be meeting before then?
Yes, and the reason why this is important is because it's more than three years. That's why the council needs to vote on this. I I, if it was only three years, I would sign off on them.
Okay, but um, we have a motion. Then uh approve a four-year contract between the town of Winter uh and Odyssey Advisors for actuaries, actuarial services for the period of July first, twenty twenty through June twentieth, June thirtieth uh twenty twenty four, or take any other action there to, that motion, uh, comes from uh town manager Faison. Is there a second to that motion by any council?
Second.
Council Honan seconds that motion, and the motion, uh, again, I read is to approve a contract in town of Winter, acting by and through its town manager and Odyssey Advisors for actuarial services for the period of July first, twenty twenty to June thirtieth, twenty twenty four. And you wanna, I think it's for a sum not to exceed sixteen thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars. Even though that wasn't in the motion, okay. Anything you wanna say about that, Austin?
Do you want me to? Anna, do you wanna go ahead?
Uh, we are required to conduct um annual valuations for our other post employment benefits uh for retiree healthcare costs to the town for our audit every year. So we um, as part of sort of reviewing um all of our contracts that we do frequently in collaboration with our treasurer collector Monica Ford, we identified an opportunity for some savings as our contract was up um with our previous um with our previous actuary. And we identified through um a quote process, um, the Odyssey advisors would provide the best cost effective actuarial services for the town for the next four years. We're required to do a four-year contract because they do a full valuation one year and interim the next year. We have to complete two full cycles of those. Um, and so the request is for us to um bring them on as a seven one to conduct our OPEV valuation um for the next couple of years. And just as a note, you you may recall that in our previous audits by Powers and Solid, and they noted that we need to to ensure a timely OPEV valuation process. So we're looking, we had a great relationship with our previous actuaries, but we're looking forward to really starting out quickly on the right foot with Odyssey to ensure that we have a smooth process for our evaluation for the upcoming year.
Okay, anyone have any discussion on the motion?
I just have one question. So did we use them in the past, or is this their first year? Is that what you?
This is the first company.
This is their first year with us. We've been using KMS Actuary since two thousand thirteen. We had a great relationship with them, but when we went back out for quotes, Odyssey was a better, uh, was a better um more effectively efficient um arrangement for the town. They've worked with a number of other communities, and they are comfortable transitioning that information from KMS over to Odyssey. Um, in light of our, our efforts to ensure that we're saving every possible penny, uh, we believe that this is in the best interest of the town for the next few years to proceed with the spender.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, does anyone wanna make motion to take this as an emergency motion?
I'll make a motion to take it as an emergency motion.
I'll second it.
Motion's been made and seconded to take it as an emergency motion. Uh, all those in favor of doing that, signify by saying aye, 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 on a roll call.
Council Jero.
Yes.
Council Placat. Council DeMarco.
Yes.
Council Christopher.
Yeah.
Council Honan.
Yes.
Council Farino.
Yes.
Council LaConti.
Yes.
Vice President Latieri.
Yes.
President Boncory.
Yes.
Okay, now the motion uh is to approve the contract. Now that it is an emergency, we can move this uh first time contract. All those in favor of awarding the contract and allowing the, uh, the town manager to sign it, signify uh by saying yes on the roll call.
Council Jero.
Yes.
Council Placat.
Yes.
Council DeMarco.
Yes.
Council Christopher.
Yeah.
Council Honan.
Yes.
Council Farino.
Yes.
Council LaConti.
Yes.
Vice President Latieri.
Yes.
President Boncory.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, the next motion by uh town manager Faison is that the town council approve the lease between the town of Winter with Pitney Bowes for a period of sixty months, five years, or take any other action there too. I don't have a a price on that motion. Does anyone wanna make that motion?
I'd like to make it as an emergency motion.
Okay.
Second.
All right, this motion's been made as an emergency motion. Uh, uh, seconded to be an emergency motion. All those in favor of making it an emergency motion, signify by saying yes on a roll call.
Council Jero.
Yes.
Council Placat. Council DeMarco.
Yes.
Council Christopher.
Yes.
Council Honan.
Yes.
Council Farino.
Yes.
Council LaConti.
Yes.
Vice President Latieri.
Yes.
President Boncory.
Yes.
Okay, now on the motion, all those in favor of approving the lease between the town of Winter uh uh town manager and Pitney Bowes for five years, signify by saying yes on a roll call.
Council Jero.
Point of uh, whatever, is a motion uh made. If not, I'll make that motion, sorry.
Okay.
Okay, you're gonna, okay.
Is there any, I just have a quick comment on the motion? Cause I, I don't think Council President had that figure. Do we have a figure for this, and was it a savings?
Uh, so this is for our postage machine, this is for our postage machine. Let me see. I don't have the figure in front of me. Let me see if I can pull it up.
There, there is never a savings for Pitney Bowes. They get you all the time. Uh, monthly amount is a hundred and eighty-two dollars and ninety-eight cents. Built quarterly, it's five hundred and forty-eight dollars and ninety-four cents.
Is this something that we share services with with the school that we could potentially save, or no? They do their own, we do our, or the town does?
Um, that's actually a good question. I believe the town utilizes our, um, I believe the town utilizes our, our postage machine. Um. I'm sorry.
You, I'm sorry, you said the town utilizes, do you, do you mean the schools?
I'm sorry, yes, I'm sorry. The school, I believe the school uh does utilize the town's uh postage machine, but let me, I, let me check to see if that's for all of their postage. I don't know if that's for all of your.
Oh, that's fine, just a question. Thank you.
You're welcome. We um, we do, uh, we, when, when departments use the postage machine, we charge it back to their lines. When you see a postage in department line items, that's, we pay it centrally and then we charge it out to them on a monthly basis, wha- whatever they use.
Okay.
I'll second the motion.
A motion been seconded to approve the lease. All those in favor signify by saying yes on a roll call vote.
Council Jero.
Yes.
Council Placat.
Yes.
Council DeMarco.
Yes.
Council Christopher.
Yes.
Council Honan.
Yes.
Council Farino.
Yes.
Council LaConti.
Yes.
Vice President Latieri.
Yes.
President Boncory.
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right. Motion passes, I, we think we're getting to the end of it. Uh.
Let's just pull it all night up.
Yeah, I know, just kidding. All right, I believe we uh the town council vote to modify the general fund budget to facilitate the June thirtieth, twenty twenty, closing of the fiscal year, twenty twenty fiscal year.
Motion to refer to finance, yes.
Motion refers this motion to finance, that's the interbudgetary transfers, correct?
Yes.
Okay, I think that's the only thing left.
That's it.
Yeah. Okay.
So is there a second for that one?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to send us to the Finance Commission. All those in favor, signify by saying aye on a roll call.
Council Jero.
Yes.
Council Placat.
Yes.
Council DeMarco.
Yes.
Council Christopher.
Yeah.
Council Honan.
Yes.
Council Farino.
Yes.
Council LaConti.
Yes.
Vice President Latieri.
Yes.
President Boncory.
Yes.
Thank you.
Hello, yeah. Uh, we're out to public comment if there's anyone still awake. Do we have any public comment? Anybody waiting to speak?
I don't see any hands up. There are two folks on the phone. Let me just click over to see if they have any.
Okay, and again, the number is three oh one seven one five eight five nine two with a dialing code of
Yes, I have.
Three nine, three three zero eight eight four seven seven. Okay, who's on the line?
This is Nancy Dalenple, precinct six.
Yes, Nancy.
Um, councilors, manager Faison, I've ac- I was actually ready to go for the first comment, but I wasn't recognized. I'm speaking at public comment tonight because I want the entire council, as well as the public, to be aware that I requested reconsideration of the motion presented and voted on at the last meeting of June second in regards to mandatory retirement. I requested reconsideration according to the rules to bring the motion back to give the council and therefore the town an opportunity to reconsider their vote taken on June second and to then take the lawful and correct action for me as well as for the town. Council President Boncory, you were the recipient of my reconsideration request, and I can only presume that you chose to ignore my request and in doing so, ignore me. I have learned that a firefighter who recently retired at sixty-five was asked to stay on the job even after reaching age sixty-five. He, I'm told, declined to stay. I was told, I guess, that I had to go, as you, Council President Boncory, informed me, Saco needed to be promoted. Fire chief Flanagan was not encouraged by a council last year to seek an alternative form of employment such as a specials program, whatever that is. It was not suggested for um the fire chief as well to go become one of the um harbor masters. It was not suggested for, um, the fire chief as well to go become one of the, um, harbor masters, as other fire chiefs and firefighters had done in the past. It was also mentioned about employees being replaceable. We are all replaceable, we all know that. This is not about that. The town does not have a very good record regarding civil rights as they pertain to women over many, many years. This is not about, um, you know, civil service or contracts. Um, this is about doing right by the town. In my opinion, and that of many others, every step of the way in the raccoon matter, those in authority for the town could have stepped in and done the right thing prior to a jury verdict, even after the town continued down the rabbit hole, incurring more liabilities so that a two-point-three turned into over three mil and change. People probably don't realize what occurred. Everyone that could have done something positive buried their heads. There are still other related matters out there that are coming to fruition soon. Yet those in decision-making positions for the town continue on incurring more and more liabilities for the taxpayer. It is not their money that's being gambled with, just the taxpayers. It is not too late for the town to do the right thing regarding the issue that I speak to. And you're all concerned about other issues and civil rights all over the place, but you're not paying attention to what's right in front of you. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, except I disagree in that I never said to you anything about someone needs to be promoted. And it was my-
We'll see about that. We'll see.
All right. First of all, and secondly, I did not want to reconsider it because you lost, uh, seven to two. What was the purpose of me making motion to reconsider? Because I didn't feel I should be reconsidered. And I didn't think you were gonna turn seven people. Sorry.
You, you never know, Mr. Council President.
Anyone else on?
And you failed to mention it at your correspondence presentation. Mine was a correspondence. You didn't pay any attention to my letter to you or the council.
It was a letter to me personally, if I would make a motion to reconsider.
No, it wasn't. It was an email to the council and, um, also to the clerk. So it wasn't a private email to you. It was in your capacity as Council-
I have the letter, and the letter is asking me to make a motion to reconsider.
Yes, because you were the one that had the vote. It's to Council President.
This is not, it's not a debate, Nancy. Thank you very much.
Well, you started the debate, thank you.
Bye-bye. Okay, anyone else on public comment?
Uh, let me see, um, Mr. Morgan.